Cacciatore.
Here.
Carberry Montgomery.
Here.
Kroll.
Here.
Rosendahl.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urban Dale is a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Item two is approve the agenda and ask for a motion to approve that with removing item 6.16 from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Rosendahl, second by Bodie, discussion, please vote. That passes. All right, we have a lot of people in the room tonight for a lot of special presentations, so we're going to get started on those. Item three, presentations versus a presentation for Gannon Burr. Gannon is, I'm going to read a proclamation and then I'm going to invite Gannon up to say a few words and to show us how he does it. So. Whereas Gannon Burr is an American professional disc golf player, raised and residing in Urbaindale, Iowa, and whereas he won his first professional disc golf association junior world championship in 2017 at the age of 11, his second in 2019, and is the youngest person ever to earn a 1,000 rating. Whereas Gannon went pro in 2020 at the age of 15, he earned the Professional Disc Golf Association Rookie of the Year in 2021, the 2024 Disc Golf Pro Tour Player of the Year, the 2024 Professional Disc Golf Association Player of the Year, and he has been the number one ranked disc golf player in the world for the past two years. And whereas he won the gold at the 2025 World Games in China and first place at the 2025 Professional Disc Golf Association World Championship. Now therefore, I, Robert Andowig, Mayor of the City of Urbaindale, on behalf of the Urbaindale City Council and the entire community, do hereby congratulate Gannon Burr on being the 2025 Professional Disc Golf Association World Champion. So Gannon, come up. I'm not sure if the equipment's going to catch my shot here.
My golf game is equipment error and not operator error.
Oh gosh, this is not.
It's the equipment.
Going straight through.
All right, he proved it.
There we go.
It's definitely.
Too much power.
Well, Gannon, congratulations again. We're very proud of you from Urbaindale and thank you for representing our city so well. Congratulations. And the next proclamation is for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the City of Urbaindale celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy. Whereas small businesses employ almost half the private sector employees in the United States and nearly 25% of employees in Urbaindale work in the retail industry. Whereas the City of Urbaindale supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Whereas organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Robert Andowig, Mayor of the City of Urbaindale, do hereby proclaim November 29, 2025, a Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and to shop small throughout the year. And Gina Wright from the Urbaindale Chamber is going to be here to accept this, so Gina, come on up. Hi, are you part of this too? Oh, I'm Clint too, all right.
I just have a few words. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of the Urbaindale Chamber, thank you so much for this recognition, thank you for the continued support in the business community of Urbaindale. And to everybody sitting in the room, don't forget to shop small and shop big on November 29. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now a very special matter, we're going to administer the oath of office to four new police officers, so if I can have those come up.
Yeah, okay. Mayor, council members, I'll introduce you to our officers. We'll start with Officer Benjamin Lavastida. He grew up in the area, graduating from Waki High School. Officer Lavastida attended the University of Iowa, majoring in communications. Officer Lavastida managed a bar and was a bouncer through college. Officer Lavastida attended the 322nd Basic Academy class at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy and graduated back in August. Officer Lavastida started his field training prior to going to the academy, and Officer Lavastida is currently working first watch as he finishes up his field training. Officer Lavastida. Next, we have Officer Mason Beckwith. He also grew up in the area, graduating from Ankeny High School. Officer Beckwith started his collegiate studies at DMAC and finishing up at the University of Northern Iowa with a Bachelor of Arts degree. Officer Beckwith started his law enforcement career as a community service officer with the Cedar Falls Department of Public Safety. Officer Beckwith also attended the 322nd Basic Academy class at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy and also graduated back in August. Officer Beckwith got married back in June, bought a new house, and has started a lot of big milestones while starting his career. Officer Beckwith is working on finishing up his field training on second watch. Officer Beckwith. Next, we have Officer Manuel Manny Miranda, who came to us from New York and is a graduate of North Rockland High School. Officer Manuel and his wife visited Iowa and decided to make the move here. I'm not sure why. We're glad you're here, though. Officer Manuel started his law enforcement career working for the New York State Department of Corrections, the Iowa State Department of Corrections, and most recently as a detention officer at the Polk County Jail. Officer Manuel is fluent in speaking Spanish, which he has already put to use. Officer Manuel also attended the 322nd Basic Academy at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy and also graduated back in August. Officer Miranda is married and has several grandchildren. Officer Miranda is completing his field training on first watch. Officer Miranda. And last but not least, Officer Jared Randall. Officer Randall is a graduate of Waterloo West High School. Officer Randall started his collegiate studies at Hawkeye Community College, receiving an associate's degree in liberal arts. Officer Randall then finished up at the University of Northern Iowa, majoring in environmental studies. Officer Randall started his career as a conservation aide with the Southern Nevada Water Authority before moving back to Iowa. Officer Randall also attended the 322nd Basic Academy, graduating back in August. Officer Randall is married with two children, and Officer Randall is completing his training on second watch. Officer Randall.
I, Benjamin Lavastida. With the City of Urbaindale. You solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. That I will faithfully and impartially. To the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties. Of the office of police officer. Of the City of Urbaindale. As now and hereafter required by law. Congratulations.
I, Mason Beckwith.
I, Mason Beckwith.
With the City of Urbaindale.
With the City of Urbaindale.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the City of Urbaindale, Iowa.
Of the City of Urbaindale, Iowa.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
I, Manuel Miranda.
Hi, Manuel Miranda.
With the City of Urbaindale.
City of Urbaindale.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties. Of the office of police officer. Of the City of Urbaindale, Iowa. As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
I, Terry Randall.
I, Terry Randall.
With the City of Urbaindale. You solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. That I will faithfully and impartially. To the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties. Of the office of police officer. Of the City of Urbaindale, Iowa. As now and hereafter required by law.
On behalf of the city, gentlemen, I want to welcome you to Urbaindale. Thank you for joining our board, thank you for joining our city, thank you for being our state's streets of safety, so thank you so much for being a part of our community. And to the family and friends that are here to support them tonight, thank you, thank you for being their support system. We will do our best to keep them safe. If you need to be their support system, they're going to have some good days and some not-so-good days, so please help them as they do their job. Gannon, congratulations, guys, and welcome.
All right. What a great night. We'll move on to item four, which is citizens' forum, this is the opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's regular agenda. Does anyone care to address the council this time? Okay, seen none, I will move on. She's going to talk later during the walk. Item five is the adoption of minutes versus item 5.1 for the November 3 meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item 5.2, the lunch and learn minutes from November 10.
Motion to approve November 10 minutes.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery, discussion, please vote. That passes. Item six is the consent agenda, and recall, we have, item 6.16 is deleted from the consent agenda. I think, Pat, did you want to speak on which item on the consent agenda? I think you wanted one polled to have a separate vote on.
I didn't. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Six, no.
Which one?
13.
All right, so I'd ask for a motion.
I'll approve, move to approve the balance of the consent agenda. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about item 613.
All right, so motion by Carberry Montgomery. Second by Bodie, discussion, please vote.
6.16 is also taken out.
Yes, it was, it was not approved.
Clarify, thanks.
I'm sorry, I talked to both of you today, I can't remember which one it is.
During the headlines look I gave you like, I'm supposed to talk?
All right, that passes, and so then we will go back to item 6.13. And I think, did you want?
Well, I just wanted to hear a little bit more.
Ask a question, Erin?
From Erin about it and how it, be careful, fits into our budget process as we're planning. It sounds like we haven't done this in a while, so I'd like to just know a little bit more.
We do a pay plan update every couple of years, about every three, sometimes more frequently or less frequently, depending on other things that are going on. We did it last in 2022, so we're due for it again now, either late '25 or sometime in 2026. We had originally intended to budget to do that in the next fiscal year, so starting the project in July, and meeting with the consultants recently to get a cost estimate for it, we talked about some of our priorities and goals for the project, and they outlined a few reasons why it may be in our best interest to do it six months earlier than we originally planned. So in talking that through with David and Nikki, we identified that funds are available in the budget to do it now, to expedite that by a couple of months, and so that is the request. In terms of not following the competitive bid process, that's, I think, I don't know if common is the right word, but not unusual when it comes to professional services, especially when a vendor has previous experience working with the city. I tried to explain it a little bit in the council letter, but every compensation consultant has a different job classification methodology, and so to select a different consultant would require us to do a full-scale study, which would probably more than double the cost of the project and the timeline as well. We have an established relationship with Cunningham and Butler, they developed our original pay plan that was adopted in 2019. We have a good experience with them, so just desire to do an update at this time.
So the results of the compensation comparisons analysis, will we have those in time to utilize in this budget process for FY 26, 27? I don't know. Not good at the math on that.
That's a great question. Because we do an update every couple of years, we don't anticipate any significant adjustments because we're able to recalibrate in minor ways every couple of years, so we don't anticipate anything, it should be pretty neutral. So we would, well, the consultants would deliver a presentation to council when the study is complete, probably sometime in March or April, with the intent to implement no earlier than July of '26, but of course, that depends on the results in the recommendation, but it should be pretty cost neutral.
So what does implementation look like? I mean, just, it's not actually giving people raises, it's just changing the paper that things are based on?
So one of the goals of the project is to just to separate out different classifications into different tables to address some compression and some unique challenges affecting just certain market segments so that we wouldn't have to apply changes unilaterally to all positions that might not necessarily be warranted, because we have some specific challenges affecting public safety that don't affect non-public safety, for example, but right now, everybody is squeezed into one pay table, so separating those out would allow us to address market challenges as needed, rather than applying those unilaterally, but separating the tables doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be an adjustment to the tables, they just, people, people in classifications would be referenced in different tables, so that, I think that's what we mean when we talk about implementation, we don't expect that there's going to be any significant changes to the wage ranges themselves, so it's my understanding that David and Nikki would plan for a typical cost of living.
Okay.
Increase in the budget that most people would receive.
I guess that's the part that I didn't really understand and wanted to understand more.
Sure, yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
All right, you going to move it?
Anyone else? Okay. With that, I'll move approval of 613.
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery, second by Bodie, discussion, please vote.
Thank you, Erin, for that. I know you weren't necessarily prepared.
That passes. All right, moving on to public hearings, our first public hearing is item 7.1, a public hearing to consider ordinance 2025, 2020, excuse me, 2025, 22, amending Title 15 to modify the zoning regulations regarding buffer yards. The public notice for this was published in the November 7, 2025, Des Moines Register, answering objections to that notice as published.
For none.
Is your motion open as public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Rosendahl, second by Kroll, discussion, please vote. That passes, and introducing this is our community development director, Steve Franklin. Steve?
Thank you, good evening all. So this item, this is the next incremental step with respect to the zoning code to try to address some of the goals that are in our sustainable action plan. Fairly recently, we did, you might recall, we changed the parking requirements, lessened those, which reduces pavement, and then we moved to have permeable pavement be allowed, and so this would be the third step that we could take. And this is, you know, this is all fairly low-hanging fruit, and that's not to suggest in any way that we can't take on things that are more involved, but we thought, over the last few months, this is the busiest time of the year for us, but there's still some things that we could do using essentially our in-house expertise to kind of address some of these items and kind of keep, to keep things moving. So I would tell you with this item, as with all the other items, if there are additional deeper dives that you want to do, just let us know and we'll do it, but we thought, you know, let's accomplish some things right out of the gate while we can. So this particular item has to do with plant diversity and native plantings, and this is certainly a topic that's close to my heart, as a licensed landscape architect have been for a long time, this is a topic that I'm interested in, and, and really, over the last, what, I would say, seven, eight, nine years, of all the articles that I read and the conferences that I go to, I mean, this is kind of a hot topic, for good reason. And really, the, the whole plant diversity conversation, that's part of what we're proposing, is really frankly, in my opinion, as important, maybe even more important than, than the native aspect of this, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So with all that in mind, I'm going to throw you a little bit of a curveball, because I had already had one item that I wanted to tweak anyway after I put it in the system, and then, and David and I had a conversation late last week that gave me a little bit more feedback about some things, so I thought, okay, and then I was going to send it and have Nicole send it to everybody, and I thought, look, let's just cover all this Tuesday night, it's not that big of a deal. So anyway, if you look at the screen, D and C, or, excuse me, item D here and item number three, they're exactly the same, there's no changes to those, and I'll explain a little bit more about those here in just a second. Item B up here, what you see in red is just some additional language that I'm going to add, you know, the, the code as currently written references that overstorey trees should be eight feet tall, and really, what we ought to do with overstorey trees in particular is refer to the caliper, and so the American Standard of Nursery Stock has some standards which you measure that six inches above ground and get what the caliper is, and really, that's how we should be measuring those trees. So I just added that language in here to say that, you know, that those types of trees should have a minimum of a one-inch caliper, and then according to those, the, those standards for American nursery, if it's a one-inch caliper tree, it's going, it should be eight to 10 feet tall, so that kind of takes care of that item, and then just kind of tweaks some of that language. So I think that one's pretty easy. Again, down here in item three, just really kind of a verbiage correction there to just, you know, people refer to it, you'll see planting plans as B&amp;B, which is bald and burlapped, so that just kind of clarifies that a little bit. Item C up here, you know, in the version that I gave you, what we had in there was to have, was to require a minimum percentage, 35% of trees to be coniferous trees, to kind of help in our screening efforts. And I got to looking again, and I was thinking about changing that anyway, and so I just took that completely out, and the reason I did that is I'm going to take you up here further up into this buffer yard section, we kind of have that covered already, already. So if you notice the bold, bold text here, I can't talk tonight, buffer yards where you've got residential districts next to CO, CN, and CG districts, where, which are our lower intensity districts, you can see here highlighted, we're already, for a buffer yard of 26 feet or more, we've got nine coniferous trees in there, so we're covering that, and then if you drop down here into an even more important section, I think, with our CH, our highest intensity commercial use district, and our two residential, or, excuse me, industrial districts, and one of them too, when they adjoin residential properties, again, there are some options for how you get to buffer yards, and those all require a certain amount of coniferous trees. So I feel like we've got that covered to build some coniferous trees in there to help with the screening, and from a native standpoint, there aren't that many coniferous trees that you can use anyway, so I took that out and I replaced it with what I'm now showing here in C, which is plant materials provided shall not include any species considered to be invasive as referenced and shown in the Iowa Department of Natural Resources Forest Invasive Species Guide. So, you know, the whole invasive thing, I mean, there's kind of a game with that, right? You got to be careful, because keep in mind, these, these requirements that we're talking about are essentially all of your very urban, very tough conditions in a city where you've got narrow strips of planting and you got 60 feet of pavement over here and 25 feet of pavement over here. And the truth of the matter is, some non-native plants are going to deal with that better than the native plants are. So that's one aspect. Another aspect is, if you take all the native shrubs that are in the DNR list, if you can find them, it's not what you want to plant in those situations anyway, because they get really big and it's just not appropriate. So, and, and then the last thing, I guess I would say, is even if you look at the, at the native selections, there are a few, i.e. like Sumac, they're invasive. So, you know, they all kind of work together, and all of the conferences and everything will tell you, you're going to be best off if you get some diversity in there and you get some natives and you get some non-natives and they all work together, just don't do the invasive stuff. And really, you know, the primary invasives at this point are pretty much probably, what, honeysuckle, burning bush, and barberry, and honestly, when I was coming up with these percentages, I pulled about half a dozen site plans that have been approved in the last couple of years and looked at them, nobody specking that stuff anyway, but there's a whole list of stuff, so we might as well go ahead and reference this and say, look, we don't want you to plant any of that. Now, the interesting part is, in doing research for all this stuff, really, the only other metro city that has language about, don't be planting invasive stuff, is Des Moines, which kind of surprises me. There are a couple other cities west Des Moines and Des Moines that, that have some incentives and different programs to plant native stuff, but there's really nobody other than Des Moines that says, well, don't plant the invasive stuff. So I feel like that's a really good step forward. So I replace C with what you see there, and I did give Nicole a heads up on this change of language, so if you're agreeable to it, she knows it's coming, and we'll make sure that the ordinance has the right language in it, so I'll mention that. Okay, so that's that item, and then when you get to D, again, this really kind of speaks to both having a diverse mix of plants, and again, those are, you know, that's obvious reasons, right? We had the Emerald Ash Bore, took out all the ash trees, we had the Dutch Elm Disease years ago, took out all the elm trees, so the, you know, the, the consensus for years now on this topic is, if you're going to have a site and you're going to have 20 trees, have three or four different varieties, so if something sweeps through and takes something out, you got some other ones that can be there. So this just kind of really tries to put some numbers on what this is, if you've got 10 or more trees or less than 10 trees, and basically, we've landed on percentages there that are anywhere between 35 and 50%, and if you do the math on it, basically what it does is it guarantees you of having at least three, sometimes four, different types of trees, and I think that's critical. And then the other part down here at the end is that with respect to native trees, going to suggest starting, and again, we can always change this, we can to suggest starting, and again, we can always change this, we can always add to it, but as a starting point, make fifty percent of all the trees on a site be native, as referenced in the DNR list. And there's some good, I mean, there's, you know, red buds are in there, and red maples are in there, and honey locusts are in there. So there's some good common trees that, again, when I looked at site plans randomly, a lot of those are being specked because they're easy to find, people like them, there's some value in there. Shrubs, on the other hand, people just aren't planting the native shrubs, again, because number one, if you can find them, they're just not really appropriate for most of these urban conditions that we have. And so what we did here, and this was, and I talked to several other landscape architects, primarily Tim West with Snyder and Associates, you know, and Snyder, Snyder has done anything from landscape plans for the, what, the old West Bank next to the post office there on Ninety-Ninth Street, which is very small, all the way up to the planting plan for the new Hickman Road interchange. So they're pretty deep into this stuff, and we talked about some of this language. And so what we decided to suggest is just say that the inclusion of native shrubs to Iowa within planning plans is encouraged when possible and practical to do so. So it's like, we'd like you to do it if you can. If you've got a bigger site and if you've got some more open areas that you can do it, you know, please consider doing it. If you've got these small parking lots where it's really just not going to be practical, then you don't need to do it. So I think that is in a nutshell. I will stop, let hear from you about any questions or anything that you've got, but this is what we're recommending as a starting place. Planning and zoning commission is also recommending approval of this, and be happy to answer any questions.
Steve, where do cottonwood trees fall? Are they native or non-native?
They're, I think, they fall into the, like, why would you want to plant that?
Exactly, yeah.
It's kind of like the tree of heaven.
Right.
You know, same thing. It's like, realistically.
So no one's doing it.
Realistically, nobody's planting them because they know what a pain they are. Right?
You know, I had some concerns about the original piece, but really, I think you've addressed quite a few of my concerns. I was particularly pleased to see the piece about the list on invasive species as a guide.
Makes sense.
It just seems, makes sense to me, and I think your percentages are probably fair, and certainly we want to encourage natives, but you've got a good point. They're not always the most appropriate for some of these applications you're talking about.
Yep.
But at any rate, I think these are some valid improvements, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I just wanted to say I'm really going to miss your enthusiasm related to this item and as you make your way.
If I could do anything I wanted, I'd make every new business plant more trees than they would ever want to plant. You know, we'll do what we can, so it matters. And that, you know, and that's a great point, even with the non-native stuff. I mean, they still provide shade, they still provide oxygen, there's still, there's pluses to any tree you can plant, except maybe, right, tree of heaven and some cottonwoods. But, yeah.
All right. All right, thank you, Steve. We are in public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none of theirs, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote.
I apologize, we were doing so well. Kroll?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty two.
Second.
And that's as amended, correct, Steve?
Yes.
Or, I mean, that, I mean, that covers it.
It's this.
That will include your amended language.
Correct. Nicole and I will get together and make sure it includes exactly the language we've just discussed.
Okay. So motion by Kroll, second by Bodie. Discussion, roll call or?
Yes.
Roll call?
Uh, Kroll?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. All right, thank you, Steve, on that item. You're staying up there for item seven point two, which is a public hearing to consider the Lori property rezoning from A two estate residential district to R one S suburban density single and family district at one six one zero three Douglas Parkway. The public notice for this was also published in the November seventh, two thousand twenty five, Des Moines Register. Answer any objections to that notice as published.
There were none.
Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Cacciatore.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Steve?
Okay, I think this one is very simple. We get a couple of these a year. This is a property, three-acre property just west of one hundred and fifty-six, north side of Douglas. They wanted to rebuild their deck, and the code, as you all know, says that a house can't be extended, enlarged, reconstructed, or structurally altered if it is not compliant with the zoning code. So this would move it out of A two into R one S, which would leave only really the lot next door in that particular area to be rezoned. They were perfectly agreeable to do that, and this takes away the non-conformities for their property. So planning and zoning commission does recommend approval.
All right.
Is the lot immediately behind that also?
Like, is that zoned?
Correct. It's two pieces. Yeah, they own that piece as well.
Okay. And is the zoning for all of it or just that front part?
It would be for both of those parcels that total the two point nine acres.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, this is a public hearing also. Does anyone care to address the council on this? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, roll call?
Kroll?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion on the item.
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty-one.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. Roll call?
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item eight point one is to establish a public hearing to consider the library interior renovations project, and our library director Nicholas Janing is here and would answer any questions if there are. If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve council letter eight three five six.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, roll call.
And I will give this one a try.
Okay.
I have a theory that it may be our public hearings. We'll see.
Item eight point two is establish a public hearing for Fire Station forty-two renovations project, and Jan or Scott would answer any questions if there are, but that's for December sixteen as well.
Motion to approve council letter eight three four eight.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote. Item eight point three is to establish a public hearing for amendment number two to the second amended and restated Northwest Market Center Urban Renewal Plan. And again, this sets the consultation meeting for November twenty-five and the public hearing for December sixteen. And Erin, would answer any questions if there are?
Motion to approve council letter eight three five nine.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Moving on to planning and zoning items, item nine point one is the Urbendale Marketplace Three Plat Five Final Plat at one zero nine nine three Meredith Drive, and Steve is back up.
Okay, you might recall, what was it, September second? The preliminary plat and a site plan for Gerber Collision was approved. So this is Meredith Drive down here, Northwest Urbendale Drive going around the corner, the existing credit union is right here, and this is just the final plat that creates the lot on which that will be constructed. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval subject to items noted. Be happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Move approval of council letter eight three five one.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Item nine point two is to consider the Mallard Prairie Plat Five Final Plat at one hundred and seventy-fourth Street and Hickory Drive. Steve?
There we go. Okay. All right. This one, I'll make sure I've got the right, that's, hang on, I'm one report ahead of myself here. Okay. Plat Five in Mallard Prairie, as we continue that development out west, I oriented this so north would be up. This is the next thirty-three, single-family detached lots, minimum lot width of sixty-five feet. This is about ten point six four acres in total. The overall Mallard Prairie development was about ninety-eight acres, and this is about seven hundred feet north of the intersection of one hundred and seventieth and Meredith Drive. So as we could, just one more street basically worth of lots as we continue to develop out west. Planning and zoning commission does recommend approval subject to items noted. Be happy to answer questions.
So the street access there is purely going to be against Seventy-Fourth Street? It's not going to extend Hickory or Sharon across that other lot?
Well, this, so, yeah, so this is Hickory up here, so it'll just take it from here and take it over one just a little bit farther west, and then the same thing down here with Sharon.
Oh, it's already down?
Correct.
The satellite hasn't gone.
So all these, so all these lots here to the right, which would be to the east there, and so you're just extending it one more street over to the west.
Excellent.
Move resolution two eight six dash twenty twenty-five.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. Item nine point three is consider the Acadia Plat Four Final Plat at Centennial Boulevard and Hickory Lane.
Okay, so this is the next to last plat for Acadia, and this is the one, I forgot the map, I'm sorry, here it is. I apologize. Thought I had it in there, but I didn't. But, and it is hard to tell sometimes where all these are out here at the west. So this is the area that we're talking about, this is Sharon Drive, this is Centennial Boulevard as it comes up from the north of Meredith. This plat is about twenty acres. Again, Acadia overall is about one hundred and thirty-five acres. This is on the north side of Meredith, about seventeen hundred feet east of one hundred and seventieth. There's only one more five, Plat Five, which will be this particular cul-de-sac when that comes in, but this is Plat Four. So that's the aerial photo on when it is, and then here is the actual plat drawing itself. These lots are required by the zoning to be seventy-five foot wide. The average lot is eighty-five feet wide. These are all bigger houses in this particular area. Planning and zoning commission does recommend approval subject to items noted.
So Steve, this still isn't going to get us to be able to drive from Meredith to Waterford, is it?
No, not through here, no.
There's still no, can you get that done before you leave? I mean, I was on the planning and zoning commission when this.
I need to go back to my desk and start working on that.
I mean, I guess I, you know, I live in the neighborhood, and, you know, it would be great to have a way to get through between those two major streets.
I will tell you, we're always looking at connectivity whenever these, you know, that's part of the reason, that's one of the things that we look for when we do preliminary plats on big properties. We're always looking to see where we can get everything through, so.
I mean, I was on the P and Z when this Acadia started coming through, and we've gotten a long way in those many years, but we're still not quite.
Gradually working west and north, so it's just, it's like, it's literally a piece at a time.
Yeah. No, I thought this might be the piece, that's why I asked for the map, but.
You going to move it?
I will. I will happily move approval of council letter eighty-three fifty-three.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Thank you, Steve. Get back to work now. Item ten point one is consider the one eight, one zero eight four one Douglas Avenue redevelopment. And to introduce this is our assistant city manager, Curtis Brown. Curtis?
It's great, it's like, it's right there. Excellent. Okay, good evening, mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is the consideration of a letter of intent with Volker Development as well as the beginning step approval to initiate the rezoning of the parcel at one oh eight four one Douglas. Mindful of time tonight, so I will move through these swiftly. As you remember, and as we discussed on November third, we've gone through a process for an RFP on this that had a primary goal to get a successful project delivered timely, meeting the minimum criteria. And through the process, and part of our selection was to really rely on the creativity and experience of the developers. Our minimum requirements were serving households at or below sixty percent AMI, providing two and three-bedroom units, and then getting at least twenty years of affordability. We went through the process, received several proposals, all were dependent on the low-income housing tax credit, and we formed an interdepartmental team internally to review those. And as we discussed again on November third, the internal team chose the proposal from Volker Development based in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. We've been working with project manager Travis Fochalde from the Twin Cities. Travis is with us tonight, and then we'll come to the podium after I'm done to talk about the project in more detail and answer any questions you might have specific to the project. Tonight's action, though, is to consider the letter of intent. So the letter of intent is one more step forward in our relationship with Volker and in the development of this site. It outlines the intended obligations of both parties and precedes the formal purchase, sale, and development agreement. So, you know, there were some questions that hopefully I can address in this short presentation. So in the letter of intent, we'll call it an LOI, I'm just going to briefly touch on these items. Volker intends to apply for the LIITIC through the Iowa Finance Authority, construct approximately fifty units but no less than forty-seven. You might ask, why the range? Well, we're very early in the process. We just had a meeting before the council meeting internally to talk about some of the site constraints, plan, and zoning considerations. So, long story short, Volker is still figuring out all the details of the project. And so we want them to have a successful project, but we also want to keep those unit counts right around what we expected, that forty-seven to fifty range. They've agreed to acquire the city properties for 750,000, investing approximately seventeen and a half million, and then creating one, two, and three bedroom units. Of course, we want to make sure that there's a substantial amount of the multi-bedroom, so at least a quarter of those are three bedrooms, and then collectively, the two and three bedrooms would be 85%. Again, they're affordable at 50 and 40% AMI, and they really exceeded our affordability expectations, committing to 50 years of affordability on the site. And so we appreciate that. The Volker Project amenity intentions, and these are all listed in the LOI, so I'm not going to read every one to you, but I'll point out a few of them. First, the Supportive Service Office, and that was one of the topics we discussed in our staff meeting before this council meeting, is we'll really get clarity on the expectations for the supportive services. The city wants it to be a sustainable, effective program. Volker wants to make sure that it it is as well, and that they can continue to sustain it. And so we'll work on that with all the details in the development agreement. A few items that are in italics, the walk-in closet, the quartz countertops, and the garbage disposals. Again, those are items that will need to get more fine tuned as the project budget comes together. The environmental stewardship intentions, again, one of the aspects of this project was that they presented items that really responded to our priorities as a city. And one of the items there in italics is the heat pumps. Again, that's one of the project or one of the elements that they'll have to make sure works financially in the project. Additional Volker intentions, obviously, pay their property taxes and not seek abatement or exemption, because it's all explained further, that that ongoing property tax payment is important to us. Incorporating the tenant service coordination to promote housing stability for tenants for at least 15 years. And then, as they develop the site, as the site developer, negotiating easements as may be necessary with any of the neighboring property owners, because there are some cross-access easements through the site. What will the city of Urbandale do? We will sell the property for that price of 750,000 with reliance on the consistency with the Volker proposal. So we've made our decisions and we keep on moving forward based on the proposal, and now the letter of intent gets those to finer detail. We'll facilitate the regulatory and entitlement process, and in fact, the other resolution on tonight authorizes the mayor to begin that rezoning process. We're doing it as a city because we're the property owner. And then we'll intend to go through the normal rezoning process with Volker to make sure that the planned unit development zoning that we put in place can facilitate this project. And then, providing tax increment finance-based assistance of up to 200,000 to establish the tenant service coordination. So just to note on this, their core project does not rely on on any additional any additional assistance from the city. However, the tenant service coordination was a contemplated addition to the project, not core to it. And so in our in our discussions with Volker, we have proposed in the letter of intent to provide that TIF assistance up to 200,000 dollars. So, just looking at the net investment at the one oh eight four one Douglas site, looking at what we've put into the site, this is slightly refined from the last time with a little more information. Looking at a 10-year, at a 10-year period, our net city investment is 1.2 million. But then, over 15 years, with the property tax payments that we expect to come in, and please remember, this is all very high-level estimates at this point, but it'd be about 1,620,000. That's up 12,000 dollars from last time, but as we were looking at making the tax increment finance assistance work, it bumped that up a little bit. The investment per unit is very reasonable on the city side at over 10 years, about 25,000, or over 15 years at 21,000. So that is the financial basics on this deal. So, the next steps. Obviously, we're we're getting to know Volker Development as they're getting to know us. And so continuing due diligence, I also made contact with Manheim Township, Pennsylvania, and Westminster, Colorado, where Volker has done development. I was pleased to hear from their city staff that the projects have gone very well. Interestingly, Westminster, also a suburban community, redeveloping a blighted site, which the city owned and sold to Volker and is redeveloping. So, a lot of similarities with that, so especially glad to hear that their experience has been positive as well. The LOI provides confidence in the good faith intent of the of Volker and the city. So now, we can take the terms of the LOI and proceed to a purchase and development agreement. And then, that will that will provide all the final details on what the obligations are. And, the agreement solidifies remedies for each party. So for example, if we provide that tax increment finance-based assistance upfront, how can we ensure that that continues over the expected 15-year period? And that's where we'll work with Maria Brownell and her colleague Nathan Overberg to ensure that, to the extent possible, the city obviously has remedies if the if the developer doesn't hold up their end of the their end of the agreement. I we couldn't we couldn't pin down right now exactly what those remedies will be, because we don't know the form of the tax increment finance-based assistance, the term, the schedule, things like that. But, this is something when and whenever staff enters into a development agreement, we want to protect the city's position and always balancing with making it a successful project as well for the developer. We'll also proceed then with the regulatory and entitlement steps. We need to make sure that Volker gets access to the site so that they can start to do look at geotech, so that they can pin down all the details on the site as well. So those would be the next steps, but it's really dependent on the city council's consideration of the letter of intent. If that has your confidence, then we can continue to proceed to the next steps, and then of course, the authorization for the rezoning. So, it might be, I'm not sure exactly, Mayor, how you want to do this. We can take questions after Travis goes through his slides as well and presents information, or I can take questions now, if you have a preference.
Do anybody have a, why don't we?
I've got it.
You have a question now of what's?
Well, I'm bad at math.
Sure.
So at one of the very beginning slides where you talked about the numbers between the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedrooms. So what is, I couldn't do the conversion quickly enough to figure out, like, how many are we actually, like, talking about unit-wise based on a 47 to 50 range? That would be two and three bedroom.
Yep.
Like, you know.
If I remember right, Travis, I checked my memory, but I think it was 110 units or total bedrooms that we were looking at, right around that, but that's going to slide based on 47 to 50.
That's right, Curtis, so I do have the bedroom counts in my portion of the presentation.
Okay, okay, I'm just, this looks great. But I I'd like to have a better number in my head than what I.
For the bedrooms.
There you are, there's the math that I was looking for. Yeah, okay.
And Travis's presentation is going to go into more detail on the actual project.
Why don't we, why don't we have Travis do his presentation, then we can combine questions from both Curtis and Travis after that.
That sounds great.
Travis, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll get it up for you, and there you go.
Welcome to Urbandale.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Travis Fauchal with Volker Development, here to introduce myself, introduce Volker, who we are, what we do, what we've done over the last 25 years, and then, yeah, supplement what Curtis mentioned as part of, you know, the project, how we're conceptually thinking about it, what next steps might be, and, yeah, answer any questions. So, our firm, Volker Development, is founded by Louis Lang III. Louis Lang is a former member of the Marine Corps, is a disabled veteran. In 2001, when he was working in his basement, started a real estate, you know, investment development company. Over the last 25 years, in addition to starting with 9% Lytec projects in Wisconsin, to kind of better serve those projects, hired some assistants in development, brought, you know, created a development team to serve those developments, started a property management company. Once he was gaining steam and traction in the Midwest, acquired an architecture firm in Milwaukee, and then also created a construction company to build the projects he was working on. And so, between 2001 and 2018, Louis and his team developed 62 projects in 12 states throughout the Midwest. In 2018, they were named one of the largest affordable housing developers in the country. Most of those projects were in Wisconsin and other states. But in order to continue that growth with that vertically integrated suite of companies, Louis brought on a couple partners to kind of help lead the organization, hire other developers across the country. And so from 2018 to 2023, Louis developed a number of projects here in in Iowa, but nationwide. So, in 2018 to 2023, developed 36 projects with Commonwealth. And then, a couple years thereafter, after COVID, Louis and his business partners that he brought on decided to go separate ways. Louis was bought out of Commonwealth and decided to start Volker Development in in 2023 and brought on a number of of development team members from Commonwealth to start Volker. So, we have, Louis and and those team members have completed 77 total Lytec projects to date. Those projects are a number of different product types, those are new construction.
Just since 23, I'm sorry, but just since 2023, then?
That that is to date, I'll touch on what we've done since 2023 shortly. But those projects are a number of different product types. High-density, new construction, you know, kind of like what we're talking tonight, three to four stories. We also have done cottages, garden-style walk-ups, townhomes, adaptive reuse projects, we're bringing new life to a school or a church or industrial facility, and all of these projects are workforce, you know, were affordable in nature with the utilization of 4% low-income housing tax credits that are administered by by each state. And so, as I mentioned, a number of them are in Wisconsin, Indiana, Minnesota, Ohio, or North Dakota. A majority of them are family projects, but we do have a handful of seniors, senior projects sprinkled throughout. A majority of them in the Midwest are are managed by ourselves. We have, Louis has retained control of that property management company that he started 20 years ago. And a number of those projects have, you know, designated supportive service programs or supportive permanent supportive housing units and permanent supportive housing set-asides. And being a disabled veteran, he has a number of units that will either prioritize or restrict tenancy to veterans. Here are the two projects that Louis received awards on in Iowa. One is in Sioux City, that is an old school that utilized federal and state historic tax credits and received a grant from the city. Another project received an award in 2022, 40 units in bond rent. And so, we do manage our our projects, but do acknowledge some parts of the country, depending on the project and the set-asides and the tendencies, there might be better property managers to serve our residents and our financing partners and our communities that we're working in. But we do have IT, legal, compliance, finance, accounting, and asset management in-house, and have a property management team of about 85 employees. And so, Mr. Mayor, these are the projects that we've done, that we've completed, started construction on, or received Lytec awards since starting Volker in 2023. These are are sprinkled throughout the country. We have offices in Minnesota where I'm based, we have a couple offices in Cleveland, in Boulder, Colorado, an office in Pennsylvania, so we've been quite active and have been relatively successful obtaining those 9% competitive tax credit awards. Though we do have, you know, experience working on 4% projects too. So, a majority of the projects are are smaller, though we do have, you know, the financial capacity to to build larger units and have had success financing them. Over the last 25 years, we've worked on a number of different financing structures. We've developed a large network of of banks and investors that we've worked with, and we found a lot of success, not only obtaining those tax credits, but obtaining local soft funds or assistance from the city or county to kind of bring these these projects forward. So we we are in good standing with IFA. We do have the recent and, you know, long-term experience points that IFA is looking for, so we will be able to maximize all, you know, point scoring categories for development experience. And then, there are a couple other points in IFA's QAP that reduce points for for penalties or for any violations on projects. We fortunately are not subject to any of those, so are in good standing with IFA and are are hopeful to score quite high on this upcoming application round. So I know Curtis has presented the project at last council meeting, but are anticipating building kind of a workforce general occupancy project that is geared towards families. There is a lot of information we need to obtain and work into the design, that is title, survey, environmental, geotechnical work to how to, you know, best design stormwater and what might be able to be, you know, really built, given the the kind the site constraints, but the project will be income and rent restricted for for residents, individuals and families at 40 and 50% area median income. And those rent restrictions will run with the land for 50 years. So if anything were to happen, and we were to have to, you know, sell the project, the buyer who would, you know, acquire this land would be subject to the same rents and income restrictions. So, we're excited, really excited about the design, about the number of market rate amenities that are included. We're excited about all the sustainable and accessible features that the project includes. Here are some of the estimated rents that will be charged on site. These are, there's are subject to change, these are determined by Polk County's area median income. So depending on the unit type and depending on the set-aside, these are the rents that will be charged after, you know, those residents will pay for those, you know, utilities. So, here is the site plan we're contemplating. Again, stormwater, you know, rain garden, landscaping, you know, all of those details need to be continued to be refined to ensure we're meeting code, ensure we're meeting IFA requirements. So we are very early on, but are really proud about how the design is looking and how how it's moving forward. Here are some projects that we've recently closed or were awarded. This is a Kelly Station project, this is a urban infill redevelopment opportunity that we closed in July of 2025. This is a 4% Lytec project where we partnered with the city and with the county. This is a project that we've been working on, we just received a $5 million award from Dane County. This is the larger project we recently awarded, this is next to a bus stop, next to a number of amenities, is on the transit-oriented development corridor. This is another project that we're working on in the city of Madison, this is a senior project. We are anticipating a soft fund award from the city on this one, actually, next week. These are projects that have closed and started construction, this is one of our projects in Cleveland, this is a senior 9% project. This is a project we've recently completed, this is another senior project in Cleveland, 9% low-income housing tax project. Here is a project that we are currently under construction on in Philadelphia. This is a a project that we also received city and county assistance on. And then, this is the project that we recently were awarded in Westminster, a Denver suburb, where the city, you know, issued that RFP, will be selling, you know, the project to us. And we actually, we're just awarded last week or two weeks ago, another 9% award from CHAFA. So, we have been busy, but are excited to really be here, to be partnering with the city to to bring this, you know, affordable and workforce housing forward. So, next steps from our perspective are ordering of third-party reports, understanding the site, updating drawings, working through entitlements and re-zoning, furthering those drawings, having those bid by a local general contractor, coordinating with property management to refine the supportive service program, and then obtaining financing and submitting to IFA come March 11th. So with that, happy to answer any questions on who we are, what we do, or or the project, but I appreciate your all-time, your time.
Thank you, Travis. Any questions?
Travis, are we able to get a copy of this presentation?
Yeah, certainly, this was sent to Curtis ahead of time.
Travis, you referred to a market study, can you tell me a little bit more about what that's going to involve?
That is just a a third-party report that our financing parties rely on to assess our rents in comparison to other communities in the area, how to kind of, how our project separates ourselves from others in the area. And that's something that we order for ourselves to to ensure that the rents we're in our underwriting are are real and are also, you know, safely below market rate rents if anything were to happen to to mitigate risk. But it's also an understanding of what are the amenities, what are the features that we need to include to make sure our project is competitive and to make sure we're designing to what we're seeing in the market, so.
What kind of timeframe do you envision to get to a final development agreement? Rough ballpark?
Short answer would be, as as soon as Curtis can send it over, we're we're excited to be here for the Iowa Thriving Communities designation. We believe this is a really competitive scoring project. So as soon as we have access and the council's blessing to move forward with this LOI, we will be spending pre-development dollars to understand the site, to continue drawings, and to get an IFA come March. So I anticipate that development agreement be signed, you know, after we're able to obtain entitlements, January 20th. So shortly thereafter, I would say is.
That's great.
Is expected.
And the TIF, the TIF stuff that you had mentioned, the 200,000, that's the the development agreement is is going to talk about schedule and everything like that, but the 200,000, like, that's the intent for the supportive services?
That's great. Right now, the 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 unit mix in the set-asides at 40 and 50% AMI maximize IFA scoring. Normally, when we're working on projects with units at 30% AMI. Normally, when we're working on projects with units at thirty percent AMI, when we're working with individuals or families that may be experiencing homelessness, we will incorporate a supportive service program to serve those specific residents. Here, when we're working with AMIs and incomes that might be higher, I think the supportive service program is more, less geared towards permanent supportive housing, but more resident stability. What can we do to enrich the experience for our residents, whether it's, you know, back-to-school events or after-school programs or, you know, job and resume assistance or whatever it may be, it is a bonus, it is not required. So we're not banking on the TIF for the project to be feasible, but are utilizing that to bring a supportive service provider on site, X amount of hours per week to kind of enhance the experience for residents. Excellent. Thank you.
Curtis, with the view on Hickman, we required the property manager to have certain certifications, I think, in affordable housing management. I mean, I'm assuming with your background, I mean, we would include that in contract language, but that's not going, that's something that they would already meet.
Right. I would, while we haven't discussed that specifically, I think we are, the view on Hickman, these developers, they were relatively new with this whole process. So we wanted to ensure that affordable housing certification was in place. We haven't discussed that. That would be an expectation on our side, too, that the property managers are experienced in affordable housing management and have the certifications to show as much.
Well, that kind of gets to the question I was going to ask is, Travis, you would be our project manager?
You know, I will be involved in every step of the way from this project, from today or tomorrow, when the LOI is signed, to when we are, you know, leased up and stabilized. So I hope to be involved. And on every single email, I, me and my team will be responsible for, you know, finding the best property manager that is experienced, in good standing with IFA, that is satisfactory to not only our financing parties, but to the city. But yeah, I will be involved every step of the way.
So can you tell us a little bit about your background?
Yeah, yeah. I've been working in affordable housing since my senior year of college in 2020. I've been on the development side, working with, I've previously served as a, you know, development analyst and then associate, and then a senior associate at a couple other large development companies that have done affordable and market rate housing in the Midwest. So I'm based in the Twin Cities. That's where I was born and raised and am now living there. But I also spent time in the southeast part of the country working on affordable housing projects in the, in Florida, in Georgia, and in South Carolina, too. So have been fortunate enough to work on a number of projects, to see the feasibility, construction, and completion of a number of projects. And yeah, it's the only thing I've known professionally, but it really, it is the best job in the world. I get to see, you know, entitlements and design and local participation with these cities and get to transform communities and lives of our residents. So I love it. It's awesome to make, you know, such an awesome impact. So yeah, I will be involved in every step of the transaction. I hope at some point my, you have my contact information card. So if anything goes wrong, you can call me or if you have any questions on the project or want to know, you know, any updates on construction, you have my phone number and email, so.
How long have you been with Volker?
I've been with Volker just about two years.
Two years, okay. And the one thing I don't understand, and I'm not questioning it really, but I just would like to understand it better. Why did Louis Lang start a new company? You kind of reviewed that, but it went fast for me.
Yeah, so Louis, for twenty years, was operating his own development company with property management and construction and brought on a couple partners to kind of help that suite of companies grow. I think from, you know, the inception to a large development company, there were challenges. It became a massive company. And I think there were just some differences organizationally with the partners that he brought on. So it was a mutual amiable
Parting of the ways?
Parting of the ways, yep. I know. I think Volker Development and our property management company actually manages a couple of Commonwealth projects. There's weekly coordination between the two groups. So I think it was just corporate changes, differences in desires of business partners.
So is now he, is he now a principal of Volker or?
That's right. He's solely focused on Volker Development and our projects, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, as a council, this project, I think I speak for all of us, is really important to us to develop more affordable housing in Urbandale. And I was really excited with the presentation Curtis gave last meeting with your proposal and to see your excitement to work with us. I think, you know, I feel like this is going to be a good fit and we can hopefully just get IFA to join in on the team and we'll go from there. But I'm very excited and I'm a few years older, but started my career in affordable housing and my husband works in affordable housing. So I mean, it's just, I mean, this is something that I campaigned on when I came to city council, which is not something that regularly happened prior to me in Urbandale. So to see this project is really exciting for me and I think the rest of the council, too. So I look forward to working with you.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Travis, thank you very much. Thanks. And we look forward, as Bridget said, we really look forward to this project, look forward to working. I love the preliminary design I've seen. I love how it looks.
Yeah, it's great.
It's an interesting site. I mean, it's an interesting pad and it's going to take some creativity and it looks like you've really stepped up to the task already. So thank you for that and we look forward to getting this to completion, so.
I love the sustainability features. Really nice.
With that, we have a couple resolutions for consideration.
Motion to approve Resolution 292-2025.
motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. That passes?
Motion to approve Resolution 291-2025.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. That passes. And Travis, I'll sign that LOI as soon as I get it to my hands after it's passed. We'll get anxious to get to work, so thanks again. All right, moving on to item ten point two. And I'd like to consider the real estate purchase agreement for 7031 Douglas Avenue. And to present this is our economic development director, Aaron DeYoung. Aaron?
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Aaron DeYoung with the Economic Development Department. Here to present to you a potential purchase of 7031 Douglas Avenue, which is currently the Green State Credit Union location branch here in Urbandale. Green State is moving to a new location on Merle Hay Road in June of 2026. The stats of the property, it's almost 1.4 acre parcel. It's got a 4,100 square foot building. It's got a full basement, so double that for this amount of space that's in there. Forty-two stall parking lot, that's to the north of the building with two access points. We have had ongoing discussions with representatives with Green State Credit Union and keeping them informed of the master planning process and the downtown revitalization effort that we have. You know, always seeing that parking lot as something that can really help with the district parking solutions. That's one of the recommendations in the master plan. So, you know, always talking with Dave or with Tim, with Green State about that. And, you know, as things progressed, it got to this purchase agreement there. So, you know, a little bit more about the building. You know, it's a notable existing building within the big block with this brutalist architecture. It's a unique one for Urbandale particularly with that defining architectural style in there. And it's a large parking lot. You know, to be able to see additional retail uses without having and having those retail uses share with their parking, you're having a solid supply of it will certainly be important. And with existing already in there would, is really a selling point for the community and the revitalization effort. You know, this is also adjacent to our recent city purchases. I can call them purchases because we've closed on all the properties here that have the X on them here in the picture. So the 7015 through 7025 Douglas properties, that's the former Dairy Queen building, as well as the Big Sky Bread building is the lead tenant there. The parking area behind it where we had the block party. And then just last week, we closed on the back parking lot of Essentiata, which is the north side of this, the top X in this picture. Certainly, the parking was the hook to see about this property, but also the strong reuse potential of this property, of this building. If you haven't been in it, you should go in it. It's a beautiful one and one that can really be an asset for not only downtown Urbandale, but for the community as a large. A little bit about the details of the purchase agreement. The full agreement's in your packet, like it always is. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price was negotiated there. The current assessed value of the property, land and building, is 1.7 million. So under the assessed value of the property, you know, related to next steps on this. So this does have a long period before closing because Green State would like to sell the asset or the property to us after they've moved out, which is fine. Having more time is just okay with us. But there is a due diligence period that runs all the way to closing with this one. During that time, we'll certainly do a phase one environmental assessment. We've done assessments with the recent acquisitions, so we're not expecting anything there, but it's always good to do the first cursory review. Certainly a building inspection we would want to do to understand what, any maintenance items or things that need to be addressed in the meantime, as well as doing a commercial appraisal to understand just what we're buying from a financial standpoint. And I mentioned earlier the long closing, so the closing we've anticipated in the agreement is between the end of May and the end of June for that closing. I didn't put very many slides in. That is the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions and we've got a resolution here to approve that, should you so choose.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Questions? Comments?
Do we, I mean, do we ask or did you ask, like, why they want to sell it to us for such a relatively low price?
I did not ask for that. Certainly, you can guess what it certainly is. Knowing that they've always been a willing partner with the downtown effort. So I do believe that there is a, you know, having this go to a use that's great for the community is certainly in their minds as well. And having it go to a new buyer or a new owner that is going to do the property right, which I expect us all to do that or to work with somebody as we're gearing up for this. Because, you know, follow on to this is understanding what we want to do with this property, with it. You know, we shouldn't, if it's going to be a private use, the city, we should get it in its good spot and then get it back to the private market. So understanding what that strategy is, we've got several months to be able to do that so that when we do close on it, we've got a good, solid path as to how we're going to turn it into what it really should be for the downtown effort. And, you know, having a check right away as they're going into a new property would be nice, too.
What do you envision as like a marketing plan? I mean, once, would we wait to do that until we own it, obviously? Or, I mean, and then do we have some visioning sessions to figure out?
Yeah, great, great questions. Been thinking about it a little bit. You know, getting to the, getting the agreement done was kind of a, give me a minute to breathe and get this one going.
Ballpark, what do you think?
This property has, you know, great retail potential to it. It is kind of a big property at 4,100 square feet, so it could be multiple users that go into it. It also, you know, it could be a civic use as well. I mean, it's a striking building when you go into it. So, you know, the uses in this building should really lend towards the public placemaking that we're doing just to the north of it with the parking area immediately adjacent, but then also having that downtown plaza that's envisioned in the master plan. Having a use that's like, yeah, I want that behind me because that's going to really help out my business or really help out my use in there. So, you know, understanding what that is is going to take a little bit of time and certainly we'll want your input during that process as well so that we know, you know, that we're going in the right direction, not only for the user afterwards, but also for the community. And you guys are elected to give us that direction. So that we're, that's on my mind to be able to do that here, you know, late winter, early spring, to kind of have a strategy and then ask for your input.
Great.
Yep. I just promised something. I got to do it now.
I won't remember. I think you'll remember, though.
Yes, yes, it's definitely on my mind.
All right. Now is our motion.
Motion, Resolution 279-2025.
By voting?
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Go to work on this, Aaron. This is a very significant acquisition.
Awesome.
Thank you for that. All right, item ten point three is to consider the Walker Johnson Park master plan. And to introduce the items, our Parks and Recreation Director, Jan Herke, back from
Nepal.
Nepal.
Hiking in the Himalayas.
Twelve-hour time zone difference.
Yeah, little bags under my eyeset, so.
Well, Jan, take it away to introduce, to introduce, kick us off here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief introduction and I'll have our consultant's going to do the vast majority of this presentation. But just wanted to remind you again of, the master plan was initiated because of the condition of the ball fields at the softball complex at Walker Johnson Park, where the lights are thirty years old probably and we can't get parts anymore. So essentially, we had information in the CIP and said, let's take a step back. Let's get community input to make sure that the ball fields is what the community wants to see. So as we know, as you as council and we do as well, we appreciate a significant amount of community input. So that's what this master plan, it was community-driven. And they did, as, I don't want to take away the thunder from Patrick, but he will be presenting that this is a phased project. So the most crucial is the ball fields. And this is a fifteen to twenty-year plan, just as Lions Park master plan was as well. So certainly taking into considerations of uniqueness of Lions Park and Walker Johnson has impact on Fourth of July, certainly realizing the significance of that and also looking at the year-round recreation opportunities for the community. So taking that in consideration, as well as it's, we have a lot of things we want to do out west as well. So excited for what's being presented in the CIP as well, but also that, just a reminder that this is a phased project and Patrick is going to share with you, I think, answer a lot of questions that you might have. And certainly then Patrick and I can answer any at the end of the presentation. So Patrick Alford with Confluence will be presenting the findings of the master plan.
Thank you, Jan. Present to the blank screen.
Yeah, you can present on that.
I can wing it.
Yeah. Which one is it, Scott? There we go.
All right. Perfect.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the planning process for Walker Johnson Park tonight. My name is Patrick Alford. I'm a landscape architect, principal with Confluence here in Des Moines. I've met with many of you before as we've gone through this planning process and so this is sort of the culmination of it. And I'm excited to share where we've been and where we ended up. So we often ask ourselves, why are we master planning? As Jan mentioned, you know, our primary goal with this master plan was to make sure that we were making a good long-term investment when making upgrades and repairs to the ball fields at Walker Johnson. But master planning is also an opportunity to connect with Urbandale residents and get a good feel for what the city would like to see, what they would like to see in their parks and specifically at Walker Johnson. And lastly, to ensure that any improvements that we do make and recommend are truly meeting the needs of the community, not just now, but in the long term. So we utilize a five-part planning process, information gathering, public and stakeholder input, conceptualization, refinement, cost estimation, and phasing. And then we culminate with this final presentation and collating final documents and handing them over to Parks and Recreation staff to live and breathe into the future as improvements are made. We use primarily four public input types.
We use primarily four public input types, beginning early in the process with online survey and engagements, stakeholder interviews, which many of you were a part of. And then our public open houses and party in the parks are kind of scattered throughout the process. And I'll talk a little bit more about what we heard and learned through that process. Just to remind you, our primary stakeholder groups for this project included yourselves, city administration staff, Parks and Recreation staff, Parks and Recreation Commission, the Public Art Commission, and then outside of city staff, the school district, baseball and softball groups, and Jayhawk Soccer, all constituents to the park itself. Basic observations, some things that we heard. One, we had really good early online engagement in our survey and engagement exercises that were hosted online. The first party in the park event, which was, I believe, back in June, kind of set the tone for future public events. And what I mean by that is, a lot of the folks that we talked to at the first party in park that were really engaged in trying to understand the process showed up again and again throughout the process at the open houses and at the last party in the park to vote on some of the concepts that we presented. The baseball and softball community was somewhat underrepresented at the public events. We met with them as a stakeholder group, but because they were underrepresented in our public events, I wanted to make sure personally that I got a feel for what baseball parents would like to see. I'm a baseball parent myself. I spend a fair amount of time at Walker-Johnston throughout the summer and fall. And so I did an informal survey of baseball parents to get a sense on what they enjoyed about the park or didn't, and what improvements they would like to see as well. Generally speaking, overall, through all of the public engagement, there was a lot of excitement for improvements and upgrades to non-athletic park facilities, the things that serve the broader community. Playgrounds, trails, open space were the top public priorities. Obviously, there was always a desire for upgrades to the treehouse and the tower, which are in need of that. And then more shade and trees throughout the park, associated with that additional seating, pathways, other sort of active amenities that were non-athletic. There is a strong desire for new amenities that we heard through all of the engagement. Amphitheater splash pad, sand volleyball, and then new and expanded playgrounds were kind of the top. And then finally, an acknowledgement from everybody that we met with that should the ball fields remain, it's clear that upgrades are needed. This button is going to go forward. All right, make sure. That being the big question for us as a design team, in recognizing that the ball fields, whether it's the ball diamonds or the soccer field or both combined, are large occupiers of space. And should they go somewhere else, what opportunities present themselves to redevelop that space into more civic-minded amenity? Or do we keep them in place and make those improvements? And it's important to note that there was openness to either outcome. We didn't get strong opinions or objections one way or the other, that there was support either way. So the outcome on whether or not there were fields to remain was going to be borne out in the process in how we distilled the information that we received and what came up as a part of the design process. You guys might remember participating in the City Bucks exercise, and we had four primary groups that participated in that yourselves. The city staff and administration group, and then Public Art Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission. And you can see from the graphic on your screens that there was a fairly balanced response overall. New amenities, features, and programs kind of rose to the top, but not so much that it outweighed our responsibility and obligation to spend money in other parks within the system as well as to embark on repairs of existing amenities in the park. Something to point out or to infer from this information is that, that when you look at that 28% in renovations, repairs, and removals, it is an acknowledgement that we should be spending money to fix things that we want to keep in the park, but maybe not investing in maintaining things that aren't highly valued or want to be used over the long term. Okay? All right. So what did we do with the information? We analyzed it to identify those common themes that might guide our decision-making. We reviewed parks, or we reviewed all of the feedback that we received with Parks and Recreation staff on a number of opportunities. And then we began testing design ideas as a design consultant. Conceptualization really is an iterative process where we all get to have a little fun testing big ideas and then retesting them. And this project in particular was a really unique opportunity, not only for the city of Urbandale, but for Confluence as a firm. As many of you may know, we have nine offices spread throughout the Midwest, and we use this park as a way to engage all eight other offices in our system. And we held a design shred over a lunch period on a Wednesday afternoon and gave all of our offices a project brief with some parameters on what this park is and what they were looking at. And we asked them to provide us with a multitude of design solutions. At the end of a two-hour design shred, I think we had something like 18 different ideas for the park. And we took those ideas and we reviewed them with Parks and Recreation staff the following day and distilled them into four concepts, which we took the next day, which was a Friday. So we went from a two-hour shred on a Wednesday afternoon to a party in the park on Friday afternoon with four concepts that we took out to the public and asked them to give us their opinion on. The four concepts are on the right of your screen. I won't dig into them too deep. But I want to point out that of the four, three of them had a primary feature as an amphitheater, a community space. Where it was located on the site is kind of not important to the overall response, but those concepts all received a much more positive feedback than the one that did not. And so that was a strong design element that carried forth throughout the rest of the process. Once we had received that feedback, we also then sent those same four concepts to our subconsultant, Prose Consulting. You probably have heard us talk about them before, but Prose is a national consulting firm that provides management and consulting planning services for parks and recreation public entities across the country. They are a trusted partner that we work with all over the Midwest and the nation in all of the communities that we work in. And they do spend a fair amount of time analyzing and researching what's going on in the Parks and Recreation field across the country. Importantly, they've all worked in Parks and Recreation as municipal parks directors and employees. So they have a firsthand knowledge of how these systems work and what municipalities require to be successful with large parks like this. On this park, we asked them, I'm going to go back real quick. We asked them to look at five things and to provide us this information so we could inform our overall analysis. They gave us recreation trends across the country, so they look at a one-year and a five-year trend. They do a market potential index, which looks at the services that we provide at Walker-Johnston Park and how they stack up against services across the metro. We had them pull visitation data so they could tell us how active the park was over a period of time. And then they also did an alternate provider analysis, which looked at all of the competing providers within the metro to help us understand where Walker-Johnston stacks up against those. And importantly, whether or not improvements to Walker-Johnston were going to keep us competitive with those other community and service providers, or if they weren't, and that might lead us to make different design decisions, particularly about the ball fields. And then lastly, we had them do an operational assessment of those four concepts that we shared. And they looked at it through four lenses: playability, operational challenges, the value to residents, and an economic impact. What they came back with was the following ideas, okay? Diamond upgrades are a high-confidence investment for the city. And what that means is money spent in the fields is a decent return on investment over time, depending on how much is spent, and it's going to keep the fields competitive with other providers within the area. If we are upgrading fields, maintaining the clover layout is really important. It's the most efficient. It works the best for ball tournament directors, and it's important that we don't break that clover of fields apart. In any concept iteration, look at expanded reconfigured parking options. Consider a splash pad or destination splash pad at Walker-Johnston. Again, another high-confidence investment. And then a properly-sized amphitheater or stage would be a high-impact investment at a moderate cost for the city, provided it's the right scale for the community and the types of events that the city is willing to support there. Overall, they recommended upgrading the diamond complex. Upgrade and provide at least one premier rectangular field, so essentially maintain soccer in the space at Walker-Johnston Park, but make it better, and build a community amphitheater and stage. And this is a good place to point out that when we look at costs or talk about costs here in a few moments, one of the big variables in cost here is the decision as to whether or not we provide synthetic turf surfacing on the ball fields and the soccer field or not. It has financial impact, but also logistical impact in how construction sequences and what other infrastructure is required to make that a successful installation. So keep that in mind. Some other things that are recommended: beach volleyball courts, the destination splash pad. And then really important in the overall phasing of this is take an opportunity to gather additional feedback at some point down the road before we engage in a future phase of work, and really figure out if some of these other ancillary proposed amenities like footsall, pump track, a skate park are both on point with current trends at the time, but also desired by the community. Again, we're trying to maintain a balanced resident-first program in the park, so we're not trying to just stuff it full of things that we don't currently have in the community, but to recognize and understand that the things that we do provide are valued and are going to be used and aren't just a short-term investment. One of our other key decision-makers in this process has been Parks and Recreation staff. We've worked very closely with them throughout the process. While we did a lot of conceptualization and sharing of ideas internally at Confluence and with our subconsultants, Parks and Rec staff also did some of that internally and then shared their ideas with us, which we reviewed and incorporated into our overall direction. And so the, sort of the five contributors to this process, Parks and Rec staff, the public, stakeholders, yourselves amongst them, supported by Confluence and Prose moving forward. Those five bubbles all contribute to this distillation process of taking all of these ideas and feedback and funneling it through the Confluence funnel, right? We are the design professional on the project. We are tasked with taking all of this information and giving back to you reasonable recommendations for improvements to the park. And so that's what we did. We took this myriad of conceptual ideas, creative ideas for the park. We narrowed them down. We figured out what it's going to cost, and then we made some decisions and recommendations about how and when to get it done. And I'll kind of talk about those here in a little bit. So we've got two concepts that were in your packet. I'll just go through them briefly. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at them. Both are anchored primarily by upgrades to the cloverleaf ball fields and improvements to the soccer field. A key component of that is in the timing of those improvements. As Jan mentioned, upgrades to the fields are critical to maintain operations of the facility and to maintain competitiveness with other communities in the area. It's a valuable asset. It needs to be upgraded to continue to be valuable and to be used. So when we talk about phasing, you'll see that those improvements and upgrades are Phase One of the work. Other key components to both plans are the inclusion of a covered stage or amphitheater-type function. In Concept A, it's going, hopefully the cursor will show up, it lives just to the south of the soccer field, kind of between an expanded parking area and in the full-size soccer field. And that's intentional so that it allows us to use that field to support audience function features, support elements, whether it's food vendors and that sort of thing, all kind of focused on that stage element. This also includes a future splash pad, improvements to the tower and treehouse. You'll see the skate park remains. We've introduced footsall as an element here. Up in the northeast or northwest corner of the site, we introduced sand volleyball, the potential for tournament cornhole, and proposed some renovations to that maintenance building to include restrooms and more efficient storage for Parks and Recreation facilities. Another thing that we don't often point out, or I fail to point out sometimes in this concept, is both concepts propose a second bridge on the south end of the creek in the park area to better connect across to the east side of the creek, to the Memorial Tree Garden, and other improvements on that side. So we've created these loops of pedestrian circulation through the park in both concepts. Concept B is similar. Again, same improvements recommended for the ball fields, but the soccer field shape changes dramatically here. This was an idea that is to create this sort of playful edge. It's a truly playable surface for soccer, not for a full high-school-sized pitch, but more oriented to youth up to 12U, essentially. It introduces two footsall courts, which can be used for kindergarten pre-K soccer as well, but takes that edge between the soccer field and the ball fields and creates this kind of playful experience where there might be a retaining wall with a mural in a way to do something a little bit different and unexpected in the park. It relocates from Concept A, the stage or covered stage, to the north side of the pond and creates a more focused space south of Geovannetti for those sort of public events, and then supports it with a restroom and other walking amenities in that area. So it's a unique destination now that is backdroped by the pond. Here, notable future proposal, again, remember, these are phased improvements, would be to replace the skate park with that destination splash pad as an option, and then expand the playground in the area of the existing hillside. Okay. I mentioned that we looked at costs, and I just want to point out that when we look at costs on a project like this, we have to do a couple of things. One, we have to pick a moment in time to run numbers against it. And for the purposes of this study, we looked at 2027 numbers, figuring that would be the earliest that a Phase One improvement might begin. And we introduce a cost range based on decisions that could be made in the future about play or play surfacing, synthetic turf versus natural materials in the ball fields, lighting upgrades or additions throughout the park. And so the range of costs is based on decisions that we make about those things moving forward. On the low end, all-inclusive, whether it's Concept A or Concept B, the price works out to be pretty similar between the two. You're looking at 7.75 million in 2027 dollars over multiple phases of construction. And then if decisions for higher-quality surfacing and additional lighting are made, we start to push to the upper end of that range.
So that's, that number is like the whole?
The whole kit and caboodle, all phases, based on 2027 numbers. So depending on how far out future phases go, there's cost escalation that needs to be anticipated at that time. We looked at a five-phase approach. And as I mentioned earlier, Phase One focuses primarily on the ball field upgrades. Phase Two would include destination splash pad, smaller restrooms, and additional amenities. And then future phases are those ones where we would go back out to the public and collect additional feedback about amenities that are proposed in those phases. I think it's important that we just focus on Phase One initially because we know that those upgrades to the ball fields are important to keeping the fields playable and viable within the overall marketplace. The low end of our cost projection was 3.6, and that assumes that we're just replacing natural surfacing or maintaining the natural surfacing on the fields and focusing our upgrades on concessions and restrooms, potentially new fencing. And really importantly out here, spectator and player amenities like new dugouts, additional shade features, things that provide a better spectating experience or playing experience for the players.
Would the outfield fences essentially stay the same length, or is it...
Yep. Right now, the intent would be that they'd stay the same length. We have a little bit of flexibility in what we can do there, but the max that we could achieve out here is about a 300-foot center-to-center distance. Right now, I think we're sitting at 280. So we're competitive up to about 13U in baseball. If we went to 300, we could maybe get to 14U. But anything high-school age and beyond, we just don't have the distance to be able to accommodate those older-age groups. High end of the range, 9.3. We generally estimate to do a field, one baseball field in all synthetic surfacing is a million-dollar add right out of the gate. So take four fields, multiply it by a million, $4 million difference. Then you start to incorporate all the other infrastructure that's required to accommodate that, and you can see where that number jumps pretty quickly to get to the high end of that cost range. Phase Two, just for comparison's sake, looking at splash pad parking improvements, another small restroom and some additional storage and landscape improvements. We've estimated at 1.6 to 2.4. We don't have a target date for a Phase Two, or a Phase One for that matter. So bear in mind that as these things move out from this timeline, costs go up. But there are a lot of decisions that can and will be made between now and then to determine what the ultimate cost of each phase will be. And if you're interested in how we've projected cost out over the four-plus phases, the graphic that you have in front of you kind of identifies that. All right. Next steps for us is all of the information that we've collected, feedback. All of the documents that we've produced as a part of this are being packaged and will be shared with Parks and Recreation staff we have on record. I know Jan and Scott and their team have already been working to get numbers into... I know Jan and Scott and their team have already been working to get numbers into the CIP. We've been talking about, you know, how we prioritize this and, you know, what does a phase one look like? But we are, we are at the end of the process at this point, and we're here to answer questions.
Can you tell me what type of conversations were held with the folks who use those soccer fields? I know soccer's been a contested, heated issue here. I just want to make sure that we've covered our bases.
Yeah, we had really good representation from Jayhawk Soccer in those early stakeholder meetings, and I believe that one of our Parks and Rec Commission members is also part of the Jayhawks Soccer Club, and so we've had multiple opportunities outside of just the Jayhawk Soccer meeting to talk about it. It was really important, from what we heard, to maintain soccer in some capacity here. There was not specific insistence on having a full-size soccer field, but as we look at the ultimate playability of it, we're trying to look at options that would provide that. And we also considered other amenities that might encroach on Martin Field on the east side of the creek. And ultimately, where we ended up was it's important to maintain soccer on the west side of the creek, and both of the concepts that we proceeded with did that.
And the proposed soccer fields mimic or match the same amount of space that they currently have?
That's an excellent question. We actually increased the amount of space. So when I, when I mentioned that the phase one improvements include ball field improvements, but also looked at soccer and regrading, one of the things that we recognized early on in our analysis of the site is that the soccer fields are kind of up
Yep.
a level, we'll call it a half-level, if you will, from parking on the east between the ball fields. And we wanted to push the fields down so that they were at a more comfortable level relative to parking and with the intent of increasing the footprint so we could get larger playable surfaces in there.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I'm a little bit confused. Are we being asked to approve a master plan that has these alternate concepts?
We are being asked to accept the master plan as it is presented, knowing that there is variability in it that will be finalized as the specific projects are defined and moved forward.
What was the motivation for taking the skate park out of concept B?
It was that there is a large competitive skate park in downtown Des Moines, and the feedback that we'd received through the process was somewhat ambivalent about the need for a skate park of that size and a recognition that through the skate community and conversations that we had, that there are other skate features that can be incorporated into the overall concept that provide skateability in the park, but that don't require a dedicated footprint. And the splash pad in that location would be highly visible in a really nice amenity for the park itself.
Are we planning another splash pad near the rec hub?
I'm going to let Jan and Scott speak to that.
That's a great question. I think the intent would be if these concepts are approved for Walker Johnson, then we wouldn't do it at the rec hub. Certainly, location-wise around the campus here would be addressed then at Walker Johnson.
Okay. Also, I think we had a meeting with the council and mayor and Confluence, and I asked a question about, I'd heard some, from some folks on the Fourth of July Committee who were concerned that there would not be enough fallout space with these designs. Is that something that's been addressed or have we communicated with, with the Fourth of July folks?
We did have conversations with Fourth of July folks informally at a couple of the public events, and we were cognizant of that as we were designing and maintained, you know, any structural improvements have been pushed to the northern limits of that fallout space as much as possible. We do recognize that there is potential for, for structures to be within that zone, but no more so than what currently exists in the park.
Would synthetic turf have any effect on that?
The synthetic turf generally has a flammability rating. I don't, I don't know if there are other requirements that we would need to be cognizant of there, but it's an excellent question.
Love ya, thanks.
Have we had conversations with the schools yet about this versus Lyons Park and all of that kind of thing and their preferences related to turf or not or any of that?
Talk to that.
The school district was involved, a stakeholder group mostly focused on the principal at Valerius and Tennis and those users that are, just like we focus soccer of the Jayhawk Club and so forth. But in regards to, you know, this is a, as was presented, this is a four-field complex. To take one of those fields out, you'd eliminate tournaments and you'd eliminate the, and essentially looking at, that wasn't part of the scope of the project of looking at providing recreation amenities for the school district. And since 2022, they've known about Lyons Park, but no discussions have been made or desire to, to provide at our most-used park, to give up a amenity that we currently have for school district use. That wasn't part of the scope.
Okay. I was just wondering, would we really be giving, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how that all schedules out, so to what extent that would really be like giving it up?
So those fields are during the season are rented every single night and tournaments during the season, pretty much every weekend. So I know there's been some questions, is it really used, is it not every single night? And again, it's just like a sports complex. It's the 4:30 to 9:30. It's not, you know, at three o'clock, we're not going to be using them as much, but, so it is a well-used, well-booked facility. But to your point, no, there was no discussions in regards to how would we incorporate the school district. I think maybe a year ago, I had a brief discussion with Dr. Dacka in regards to, I think for the viewpoint of the Parks and Rec Director, you're looking at if you're doing a partnership, what is the plus benefit to the city? I think that would be a neutral or a negative to the city. So again, my opinion, I don't think that would make sense for our most-used park.
And then, how are you viewing turf versus grass?
I mean, the cost, I think, is, we've got a lot of things we need to do out west as well, so I'd love to do, you know, time and money, but I, I think what's being proposed, well, I know what's being proposed in discussions with David, is the, doing regular grass at the
Do we have any sense of the expense for us of managing the grass versus what it would cost us to manage the turf? I mean, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples over time.
Yeah, I think that's more your
Yep. All right. So we, it's a good question. We do need to look at a return on investment calculation in making turf. The stark reality of it is, is that the revenue that's generated by the ball field rentals out here will not substantially increase over time, whether there is turf or natural grass.
Okay.
To the degree that you could calculate a 30, 40-year return on that investment. I mean, we're talking about over a million dollars a field to do it and a net revenue out here that doesn't approach that each year, even calculate it out over 25 or 30. In consideration of that, the average lifespan of a synthetic turf field is anywhere from 10 to 15 years when you have to replace the surfacing itself. The infrastructure, much longer, much longer timeframe. The playable surface itself, the rug, if you will, has to be replaced 10 to 15 years on average. So the cost incurred to put that in, it doesn't pay for itself. Where communities make an investment in synthetic turf is when there is a high incidence of cancellations for tournaments due to weather, and having natural grass surfacing makes it difficult to schedule tournaments and generate any revenue. I know we have numbers on how many cancellations there have been over the last several seasons. It hasn't been a ton, but there have been some, and the turf field is not going to materially change that in the near term.
And just to add on to that, I agree with everything that was said, but from a standpoint, you know, we're looking at, in discussions with staff, we wanted that range to be presented to the council to not contemplate or, you know, make decisions before decisions are made. From a practical standpoint, when we talk about the CIP, which is 13 days from now, not the, I'm counting, but, you know, we, the recommendations that come forward will contemplate all of this and, you know, not for a spoiler alert, but from a standpoint of a delta of over a million dollars per field and what we're trying to get out of the fields, and we have four fields, and we have a backlog of things that we need to get done in other parts of the community. I just, I don't, you know, unless the council just says this is the most important thing and we have to do it, and we have to give up some other things, I don't see a path, I don't see the juice being worth the squeeze on, on synthetic. A lot of communities have gone that route, but from the standpoint of what we're trying to do here, what we're trying to accomplish with four fields and all of the other requirements and all the other areas that we're trying to build in capacity for the CIP, it, you know, it would, it would really, you know, I think, take away from the other projects that we're going to present. So I think this will make more sense in 13 days. And there, again, these are recommendations. It doesn't mean that, you know, the way it's built in the CIP would preclude the conversation, but when you start, look, the delta in the price, it just almost immedi, I mean, you can run the back of the napkin, but at the end of the day, when you're talking a million dollars apiece, I just don't, I don't see it as being a priority over getting some other projects in the ground in other parts of the community where people can use them, lots of people can use them too, from the public.
I agree. I might add to that, that there were a lot of considerations amongst the Parks and Rec staff and our design team about, about whether or not we put multipurpose field in. A lot of the alternate providers in the community have put in large square rectangular synthetic fields that can do multiple things. There are soccer and baseball and softball, and they've got flexible field fencing. There are a lot of logistics that go into that. And, you know, what we heard through the feedback process, particularly from the baseball and softball parents that I've interviewed, is that Walker Johnson is a really neat place to come and watch youth baseball and youth softball because there's grade change and because, because it's a unique environment and it's central to the metro in a way that is easy for families to get into and out of. And trying to replace that with a big rectangular multipurpose field would, would take a lot of the character of the park out of it.
I've got a few comments. First of all, I just am incredibly impressed with the process that Confluence and staff went through from beginning to end on this in terms of community engagement. Hearing about your internal design, Charette, makes me love it even more. So I just, this process, I think, has been one, I think, that should be replicated when we do anything or when you guys do things. I mean, it's been really a good process, and I think we've gotten a lot of great feedback. With that being said, I think, you know, Pat's question related to, you know, the school district, I think that underscores what I've been saying is I think we need to have a work session with the school board where we talk about things like this because we're all friends and we talk about lots of things. And, you know, they have other, they have thoughts about this that didn't make it through the process, you know, related to using these fields. So, I mean, I just think, related to parks and other facilities, the, you know, sometime this spring, I don't know, but I think it needs to happen where we get around a table and have some discussions about how we can work together and what our plans are, what their plans are. And then, I know David alluded to this, but where I stand, as much as I love all of this stuff, my priority is to have amenities in my part of the community. And I hate to say my part of the community, but that's what it is. And we, you know, we got flushable toilets. That's, it's really exciting, but we want and deserve to have, you know, some backstops and shelters and, you know, sand volleyball, anything.
SAW.
Yeah, footsaw. I mean, we don't have any, I mean, it's, you know, we have some great playgrounds and some flushable toilets, but I have a hard time spending our limited parks budget on amazing parks that we have in central Urbandale, especially a splash pad, as much as I really want to pull. Jan and I were reminiscing about that earlier, but that's just my two cents on this. I mean, I, I think this plan is amazing, and I would, if we had all the money in the world, I would say, let's, let's implement it tomorrow, but when we have to prioritize, I'm hopeful that we're going to see some stuff in 13 days out in, in Dallas County.
I would echo. I also agree, we need to sit down with the Urbandale schools. As much as I appreciate, Jan, where you're coming from and your perspective on having to float the costs and a revenue stream, you know, Urbandale students are also Urbandale residents, and I think we have to keep that top of mind as well. I am curious, while we have you here, because you're so knowledgeable about baseball, softball fields, with the four, the configuration of four fields, is there a way to reduce size of three and increase size of one, that it might be able to incorporate high school as well as
Yep.
younger kids?
I'm glad you asked the question. We did actually present a concept as a part of the four that we shared with the public at the second party in the park that had, and one field that was increased in size that we qualified as a championship field, but the idea being that it could serve an older age group, or it might be something that was playable by the high school students. And when we shared that concept with our third-party consultant, with PROS Consulting, they very quickly said that operationally, that's a real challenge for the way that tournament directors can use the park, and they recommended that we not go that direction because it then excludes bracket play and efficiency in tournament organization for the remainder of the complex. And so we, we moved beyond that concept for those reasons.
Because those other fields then would be limited in size?
They, not only limited in size, but
Different.
but you couldn't, you couldn't manage a tournament here for a particular age group. And the way that tournaments are generally structured now within the metro is anytime you see an advertisement for a baseball tournament or a softball tournament, the age groups are spread across different parks within the community. And so, but my son, for example, is in 12U, he'll be 13U this year. The whole 13U bracket is held here across all four fields. And 14U is somewhere else, and 12U is somewhere else. And so if they can't run a full bracket here, then it just severely limits how they can manage the tournament.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yep.
As a parent, I'm sure you love that, right?
It's nice to be able to, like, when state baseball is here, it's nice to be able to come to one park consistently two days in a row, whereas with the softball tournaments, for example, they send us all over the metro. And I'm not exaggerating when I say if, if we've got a three-day tournament, we might be in Grimes on a Friday night, we might be in Fairway on Saturday, and we might be in Waquis on Sunday.
Absolutely understand.
There's no consistency to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I'm just going to chime in on a couple of things I'm going to open. I know we have some folks here that have asked to speak, even though this is not a public hearing, I'm going to allow that too, so. But first of all, I mean, as far as the school district's concerned, I mean, we, you all know, I've said this to you all of you, and David's had conversations, and we've both had conversations, I've had conversations with school district. But I agree, we do need to have a, we've had regular meetings before with the, with the school district, and I think that's good to do, just not, just on this specific issue, but on general issues. So I've mentioned that to Rachel, and she's open to it, so I think we will certainly get that scheduled, so. Again, I, this is not a public hearing. Normally, I wouldn't take comment, but people have asked to comment on, so I'm going to allow some brief comments on. I'm first going to write, Tim, you first asked to do that, I'm going to recognize you first if you want to come up and, and
Can I drop a couple of questions too?
Sure. Okay, Tim, before you speak, I'm sorry, I preempted Blake from asking a few questions. I'm sorry.
Yeah. When you have like a dual concept here, like an A and a B, like, how do you, how do you kind of square those? Because there's a couple of significant differences between those two.
Sure. It's a great question. It is something that, working with Parks and Rec staff, we start to make decisions based on how are they going to best be able to program it? Where do the costs fall for one particular decision over another? Where do the costs fall for one particular decision over another? And, and ultimately, it boils down to a, you know, there are some sort of key elements in each of these concepts. I'll use, for example, the covered stage. You know, do we want to see a future park concept where that stage is its own space north of the pond, or is it something that's more integrated into the central space of the park? That will be a key decision point that collectively, the Parks and Rec staff and city staff and a consultant will need to make as those decisions are made. But those are intentionally second and third-phase decisions, because we recognize that the most critical thing to do right now is to make the upgrades to the fields happen, so that we can continue to use the park to its fullest potential for that use.
Gotcha.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah. And when it comes to, like, field size, like, 12U, 13U, I'm not super tuned in on all of those terms. Is that, like, age group sizing, or what does that look like?
It is. Yep, and it really relates to two things. It relates to outfield fence distance from home plate and baseline distance. And as players get older and stronger, you need, you need more distance. Otherwise, it becomes unsafe. And it's unsafe from the standpoint that a pitcher throws a ball to home plate and a batter hits it. If, if they're really powerful hitters, and there's not enough distance between the plate and the pitcher or the plate and first base, injuries happen. And, and so, because players increase, their age increases and their strength increases, we stretch the field out to accommodate that, primarily from a safety and playability standpoint.
U-S-A and AAU have their own rules about, about distance. And, yeah, as you, as you get older, you graduate on baselines and pitching distance. It just doesn't matter of course. I don't know of any organization that, that does not do that.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I think it makes sense to kind of stay within, I mean, like, if the fields are this size and we're renting them frequently, and, like, expanding into other areas where we don't already play, like, what's our niche market, right? I think, so I think it makes sense to, to kind of have that sizing kept in mind. So. All right, that's my questions. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Tim, if you can just give your name and address for the record.
Tim Fitzgerald, 15805 Winston Avenue. Appreciate the time from all of you tonight to speak a little bit. And I will be honest, some of the presentation, I wasn't privy to ahead of this, so my comments are going to be a little bit jumbled at times, so I apologize for that. First and foremost, I really like the city of Urbandale. I really like a lot of the things the city of Urbandale does. I like the services that we offer. I like the relatively low tax rate, and I hope all that can maintain. My concern being here tonight with Walker Johnson is not only the process, but the end result of this right now. You know, I really think with the recent comments from the staff and council during the council meetings, that budget concerns, the potential for property tax changes, now is the time for the city to truly focus on what it needs. And in my end, and from where I'm sitting right now, if the city needs to repair fields at Walker Johnson, I completely understand that. What I do not understand is how that $660,000 repair in the CIP budget turns into a $7 to $16 million CIP project. I also tried to find if this master plan was part of CIP documents. I could not find it. I did see CIP funding for skateboard, park improvements, restroom, softball complex, but nothing else. And I do feel this is important comments for you to hear as you guys go into the CIP budget. If you move forward with this plan, my concern is what items are you going to cut from CIP? Where's the funding to get it come from, et cetera? In looking for the rationale for this master plan for Walker Johnson, I found the 2018 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. That plan identified two master plans that should have been done, and those are the plans that the city should be working on. One is for Lions Park, which has been in the final stages of its short-term implementation. The other one was for Walnut Creek Regional Park. The closest thing I can find for Walnut Creek Regional Park is a mention of a 2016, 2006 master plan that I cannot find online anymore. What I can find is a generic map of Walnut Creek Regional Park that shows some current amenities like trails, playgrounds, and shelters, like Bridget mentioned. Somehow, though, Walker Johnson has jumped ahead of the priority for a master plan for Walnut Creek Regional Park. If you implement this plan, and I want you guys to realize this list, the park amenities that are on the eastern side of town but not on the western side. For example, eastern side has a dog park, splash pad, two sets of pickleball carts, two courts, two sets of tennis courts, a skateboard park, two year-round shelter houses, softball fields, soccer fields. None of those are on the west side of the interstate. As you move forward with any of these master plans, you can add potentially footsault, lights for a pickleball court, bathrooms for pickleball, sand volleyball, bags, games, batting cages, one or two expanded playgrounds, another splash pad, an upgraded treehouse, an upgraded treehouse in a new location, a new bridge, nature-themed park and a covered stage. Since the 2023 bond issue for Walnut Creek failed, there have been some amenities added to that park, but nothing specifically at the facility site for 156, excuse me, 152nd and Meredith. The CIP mentions amenities in that facility site, such as a restroom, shelter, parking lot, pickleball courts, amphitheater, which are all on-programmed right now. A splash, excuse me, a splash pad is scheduled to be built in 2028. My concern is if you move forward with any of these pro, excuse me, plans for Walker Johnson, what will happen to that splash pad that has been well-needed for a long time in the western part of town? In the CIP for these Walnut Creek projects, you state, quote, "These proposed amenities would help connect east and west Urbandale and provide a sense of community." And also looking at the rec hub, it looks like, and Jan mentioned, the splash pad was going there as well. Sounds like that may not happen, because you may have two splash pads in the same vicinity if you move forward to Walker Johnson Regional Park as well. That's another project that I really ask the necessity of, is, is the rec hub a really needed project? I've been told numerous times that it is difficult from a funding and budget perspective to fund new projects, amenities, especially when looking at western Urbandale, because it is new. I know you'll say that plenty of money's been spent in western Urbandale on projects, and I will agree with that, and I will not dispute that. Part of that, those funds being spent, though, is because you have a blank slate that needs filled. This is not a monetary argument. It is about amenities on the western part of town. If it is difficult to find funds for western Urbandale, why does it seem the city always finds funds for eastern Urbandale? Whether it's economic development for downtown, Merle Hay, or parks projects, there's always funding for eastern Urbandale. I would argue that as Urbandale continues to grow west, and if you want to continue to grow west, more focus needs to be placed on that side of town. Urbanity needs to be proactive by adding amenities, infrastructures, and economic development to the growing western Urbandale. With these seemingly new projects, and I hope that this is addressed in the CIP upcoming, there is a lot of overlap in these projects that are proposed in not only the current five-year cycle, but the on-program portion of the CIP. So I hope truly, in the next few months, you guys look at what is really truly needed in the city of Urbandale. Every day, residents prioritize what they need to spend their funds on and how much money is available for their wants. The city needs to do the same thing and be good steward of taxpayer funds going forward. Lastly, there are a lot of comments at council meetings about people on the western side of Urbandale not knowing what town they live in. If you don't, if you want people to know where they live, it is time to give the same priority to the western side as Urbandale as you do on the eastern side. In your own words, it is complete, it is time to complete the western projects that will, quote, "Connect east and west Urbandale and provide a sense of community." Hope you take, guys, take this all into consideration as you plan ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Bob, if I could chime in just for a minute. Tim, I didn't have a chance to, to chime in on Bridget's comments, but I agree with her. I do think that these baseball fields are an asset that need to be protected, and we should, we should do what we need to do there. But as I canvass some of the, the western precincts in Dallas County, the concerns that you raised, I heard, not infrequently, that we need more amenities in Walnut Creek Regional Park and other parts of western Urbandale. So just as a general proposition, you know, I, we need to take care of those baseball fields, but I, I agree in principle that we need to prioritize western Urbandale more than we have.
Yeah, I agree too. And I, I, the way I understand this process is, we needed to do the planning to make sure, we needed to make the investment in the fields, and that the balance of the park plan is really something for down the line. And I'm not anticipating that we're going to be putting something in the CIP that would upend anything we've already got in for western Urbandale. And in fact, we probably need to do, not probably, we know we need to do more for western Urbandale. So I'm anticipating that that's going to be the process we're following. And I hope that makes sense to Tim, because it, I think it's what he's talking about.
In 13 days, we're going to be...
13 days, we'll know more?
Just, just one little quick thing, too, on the master plan. I mean, that's, the execution of master plans take decades, you know, is measured in decades, not, you know, not one or two or three, not even a CIP cycle. So, the planning process is important. I think it's important that we did it, and the latter phases are, you know, in lack, I mean, really, it's all in pencil at this point, pending council decisions. But the reason for the master planning is to have an idea of what you're doing over an extended period of time. The CIP recommendations will really inform, you know, where the recommended funding it will be spent over the next, you know, two to three to five years, but the next two years being the most important.
All right. Mary, did you want to make any comments? You had asked to speak, so...
Excuse my cough.
As long as you're not contagious.
Well, I think I'm still sloughing off anesthesia from surgery I had a little bit ago, so if I cough, I'm sorry.
You say you're moving better.
I am, and I got rid of my crutches. I was going to bring my cane tonight for the sympathy vote. Mary Poulsen, 6840 Mill Pond Drive. I'm here tonight representing the Urbandale Fourth of July Committee, and specifically the fireworks. And I brought with me tonight Tim Mueller, who is the president of the Fourth of July Committee. I want you all to be aware that last summer, I attended the first open house of the reimagined Walker Johnson Park. I shared with the staff and the consultants at that meeting a map of the park with the fireworks setback zone. And I specifically stated, anything built within that boundary could seriously jeopardize future fireworks displays. I left my contact information with the hopes that there would be further information shared with me and/or the Fourth of July Committee. And I do apologize, I know you may have spoken with some Fourth of July Committee members at the party in the park, but you have to understand that our Fourth of July Committee, each member has a specific function. And I doubt that any of the other members of the committee are as familiar with the fireworks and the setbacks as I am or as Tim is. So with that said, I did share these concepts with our fireworks company, and I'd like to read to you what they sent me. I've reviewed proposed plans for the improvements to the Walker Johnson Park. I have concerns about some of the proposed changes within the traditional setback zone during the annual Independence Day fireworks display. The addition of materials that are easily damaged by fireworks fallouts will likely cause the current site to be rejected by our insurance company. The Urbandale Fire Department may also have concerns and not approve a permit based on too great a chance for damage to property. And when you mention the synthetic materials for the southeast field, the baseball field, the synthetic materials will throw us out there as well. They go on to say, "As you know from the process we went through the last time we moved the chute sites, Walker Johnson may be our only option to maintain a display of your current size. I was involved in the relocation of the fireworks from the high school to the middle school, and finally to Walker Johnson. The fireworks company says Walker Johnson may be our only option, but I can tell you from the processes we followed when moving the fireworks, Walker Johnson is our only feasible option. I also asked Fire Chief Cardwell and Fire Marshal Rec for their comments. Per Chief Cardwell, regardless of the option they move forward with, new structures would be located within the current fallout area, which would preclude using this site according to the International Fire Code. Fire Marshal Rec researched the code to determine if there might be any provisions or workarounds, and he indicated there really aren't any. So tonight, I respectfully ask that you decline to accept the master plan and send the work back to the drawing boards for options that will protect our fireworks display setbacks for years to come. Thank you."
All right, thank you, Mary.
All right. I mean, the, the master plan, I think, as we've talked about, it's, it's a conceptual plan. You know, I appreciate the points that have been made, but I don't think it's, Jan, David, I don't think, tent him out to a rejection of the plan. I think we certainly can accept, we are receiving and accepting the plan, and we're certainly cognizant of those points that have been made, and we'll review those as we move forward in the, in the CIP and as we approve projects, based on that. It'd be my personal opinion, so.
And, and I would like to know, because, like, I would assume Geovannetti is in that circle. Like, how does Geovannetti, like, fit into that? And, and is there some sort of, basically, I feel like, if we look at a covered stage, if we look at bathrooms, if we look at those types of things...
Mary, you had your chance.
I was just going to say, Geovannetti, there's just a little corner of Geovannetti that is in the zone, and the fireworks company puts a spotter right there on the corner. And then there's also a restroom down by the tennis courts, and we have a spotter there as well. Just wanted to clarify that.
We can do some follow-up.
Yeah. I think, I think it would be worth following up and getting a better understanding too, because, you know, if it's a materials perspective, if it's a, like, how does all of that fit? I think it's worth thinking about, too.
Yeah. No, it's, we certainly need to be cognizant of it, so. But I don't think it's a reason to reject the plan. My, my recommendation would be for the council to accept the plan tonight. There certainly, it's not set in stone one place to go. There are, you have options, you have different things that we're going to look at, and we're going to be discussing that through the CIP. And in years beyond, as David said, this is not something we're doing in the next year.
It's not anything that we're planning with respect to the ball diamonds that's an issue, right? Am I right about that? The, the zone is not anything that we're doing within the ball of diamonds?
Right.
Right, okay. Because the rest of it has, we've got plenty of time to, to deal with. Okay.
I mean, I think if we were to go the synthetic route on the ball diamonds, it might be problematic.
Yeah, I got you there, but that doesn't...
And I think because of that, it, it gives us a clear direction on where we need to go with that.
Yeah, we're to go with that.
More than just the cost.
Yeah.
So, so approving the, the plan isn't going to put Fourth of July fireworks in peril?
No.
Okay, all right.
Can, can we, could we make note of that item, though, as we accept the plan? Accept the plan recognizing future review will require acknowledgement of the, of the fireworks zone?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion by Fodi, second by Kachatori. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
Did you go to sleep?
I went to sleep, okay.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
I don't have a voting screen.
Makes me feel better, because I don't either. I thought it was all me.
But yours did, yours did not.
Yep.
There you go.
That passes. All right, again, certainly lots to talk about yet. Thank, Tim, thank you for everybody who came tonight. Tim, Mary, thanks for your comments, and, and certainly things that we need to look at, and we're cognizant of that, but we still need to, this is a good start, and I want to appreciate Confluence and the process, and what Bridget said earlier, certainly this was a very all-inclusive process, and appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it today. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, we are at eight o'clock. Dave and I have been, had a little sidebar here. I think if it's okay with the council, we'll, we'll bypass item 11 tonight and save that maybe. We, it's not a time crunch to do that. We can do that at a future lunch and learn or maybe at a future council meeting.
I feel like moving up the meeting time hasn't really helped you out, David.
I was going to say in my comments that if, yeah, we may, I may be coming and recommending a five o'clock start time or a six o'clock start time back, because, yeah, sorry.
Be cognizant of that when you make your dark comments.
I've got a whole half page of comments here.
All right. David, so first?
Very quickly, just a reminder, the CIP materials, we are putting the finishing touches, that those should be available to pick up on Friday. Look for an email from staff when the Eagle has landed, but that should be on Friday for the CIP materials, and then the meeting on December 1st.
All right. I'm going to reverse roles. I'm going to start with Pat tonight.
Oh, my God, I'm so unprepared now. Actually, I don't have too much to say. I, I do want to make note of, of one thing in particular, and that is, you know, the comp plan was done, and it's beautiful, but we still find ourselves, I think, converting a lot of agricultural land into residential that may or may not be particularly dense, and we're not producing food. We got issues with some of that. And so, what I'd like to suggest, and David, I'll give you a call about it, is, but there are some organizations working in this area of agricultural land conversion. And it might be nice to have a couple of them speak to us at a lunch and learn, so that we can learn a little bit more about what's out there, what some options are that maybe we could incorporate in some way. There's 100,000-plus acres of land per year in Iowa that are moving from agricultural land to applications like this. We probably don't want to be as fully engaged with that... We probably don't want to be as fully engaged with that as we might be if we don't think about this now for some future opportunities. That's my point, and with that, I'll be quiet. All right.
Well, that is a great lead in to what I was going to say. I wanted to congratulate you on, uh, being named the recipient of the 2025 Iowa Nature Champion.
Thank you.
Award from the Iowa Nature Summit that will be presented to you later this week.
Very much.
And as I've said it again before, I'll say it again, I think Urberville is very lucky to have someone of Pat's, extensive resume to sit up here at the council and help guide our decision-making process.
Thank you.
Um, congratulations on that award.
Purposely didn't tell anybody about that, okay. Thank you.
It got out. Wanted to congratulate the Waukegan Northwest Football Team for making it to the Dome for the first time. Unfortunately, they lost in the semis, but, uh, good luck to Dowling, maybe, I don't know if you can really say that, um, in the finals this week. Mayor Bob, David, and I had a chance to meet with the city of Des Moines today related to, um, DART. More to come, I guess, on that. And we also, uh, found out today that DART did not receive a bus and bus facilities grant from the Federal Transit Administration for our new operations facility. So stay tuned for further details. We thought we had a really good, uh, application, and Representative Nun was really supportive, and, but no, uh, we did not receive that. I wanted to acknowledge the park staff and, uh, the other staff, Curtis, and, uh, VFW for some incredible Veterans Day, um, events that we had, the brunch, um, and then the, uh, really moving ceremony that we had here at City Hall. And then, um, freaked Bob a little bit out this afternoon, but I discovered, um, some very questionable activity at Fire Station Number 43 as I was coming home from our meeting downtown. The Ghostbusters vehicle was parked in front of Fire Station 43, uh, had to pull in and do some investigation, but it turns out they were just filming for a toy drive that they are going to be completing. So, uh, I have some stickers for us from the Mid-Iowa Ghostbusters, and you can follow them on their Facebook page to find the video that they took at Fire Station 43 this afternoon.
All right.
That's it.
Thanks, Bridget.
Discovery work.
I'm assuming you're going to be talking about Miracle on 86th Street, or no?
Miracle on.
86th Street.
Well, yeah, I hadn't thought about it, but where you want to, if you can, go ahead.
I didn't want to steal your thunder. Miracle on 86th Street is happening on the 25th at 5:30, so be sure to come for the lighting.
We have another meeting before that, don't we? No, we don't, we don't, that's right. My gosh.
I got you, I got you.
That's right, it is next week.
Uh, and I'm looking forward to the CIP stuff in 13 days. Do you have an idea for when we'll kind of get materials to kind of pre-read into that, or is that going to be a day of?
Friday.
Oh, Friday.
Yeah.
I missed that one. All right, that's all good.
Yeah, you'll get an email when the Eagle has landed, but the materials will be available on Friday.
All right, is that it?
Yep.
All right. Joe?
Uh, thank you. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate the public comments, uh, Mary and, and Tim. I wish we had more of it. That may not be a popular view on, on the, uh, but, uh, I, I appreciate hearing that. I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony, which I agree was, was very nice. And afterwards, we had time, several of us, to make it to the University of Iowa Healthcare Ribbon Cutting, very nice, uh, facility there. Bridget got to.
Bridget got a picture with Chuck Long.
Exactly.
Can't believe I forgot.
And then I understand that, uh, the Urberville School District has an interim superintendent, Pam Dodge, and, uh, want to extend a welcome to her.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Joe.
All right, I'll try and keep it short. Um, just drawing your attention to the Human Service Committee notes that are in our consent agenda. Make sure to look at those. Super excited to see the Volker Plan. We talked a little bit at MAC this morning about the HUD NOFO. Stay tuned, it, the notice of funding opportunity, um, it, it, it has the very strong potential to decimate homeless services for Polk County and nationwide, not just Polk County. So some things just to keep in mind, I'm happy to debrief anyone. I will be sending out an advocacy alert in the morning. Um, I can make sure all of you get that, uh, tomorrow. There is some material on our website currently, and I'll be probably updating it at some point in the next 12 hours. We met for e-bikes and e-scooters. We're working alongside the chiefs to take their lead and support their lead in that work. We met yesterday on that. And tomorrow, we're talking about, uh, reviewing Polk County Housing Trust Fund's Affordable Housing Presentation and their inventory study, and hopefully making a recommendation, uh, that will come out of that group to make to MAC on what they want us to do with that information. So more to come on that, but, uh, again, um, for our Volker folks, I'm sure you're connected with Polk County Housing Trust Fund. There's a great, um, webinar on their website about, uh, the status and the inventory of various projects in the Polk, Dallas, and Warren County area, so it's worth looking at. And I'll be there Tuesday.
I screwed up and missing act. But in my defense, I was here filming something at eight o'clock for Derek on thriving communities.
I, 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 I got that bulletin, um, yes.
You got the which bulletin? About the thriving communities?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It came in loud and clear into my office, so.
My, my voice, the recording?
No.
Oh.
The announcement that it was happening this morning.
Oh, okay, I got you. All right, uh, I just have a few things, uh, as well. I want to keep it brief. The, uh, the one with the thriving communities. Secondly, I had a meeting with Des Moines as well on Sister Cities. We may be looking at maybe reconfiguring the Sister Cities relationships in the, in the organization and make it, uh, to, maybe, so stay tuned. We may reconfigure to maybe have an elected official on the Sister Cities Commission. We have a citizen member right now, and, and Des Moines has a lot of citizen members, and I think they want to take, have more ownership of elected officials on that, for that as well. So, uh, we'll, stay tuned to, for the discussion on that. Uh, I do want to mention, uh, Polk County Emergency Management, I, I need to make sure you are aware of this and what's going to happen, or what's planning to be happened. Tomorrow, there's a meeting at two o'clock. Uh, and again, I'm, I'm the, normally Chief Cardwell is our representative, but when it comes to voting matters on the budget, that needs to be an elected official. So, uh, that's where I, I'm the primary member for that. Blake's an alternate on that. So there is a vote tomorrow, uh, at two o'clock to essentially set up a county-wide levy to replace the 28E agreement that Polk County Emergency Management operates under. So, uh, there's been enough, it, it's, there, there's some back and forth on it, and David's looked at, talked to A.J. Mum. We visited about it. Our recommendation would be to vote yes on this, but I want to make sure that you're all aware of it. Uh, I think overall it provides more stability for the Polk County Emergency Management. The only thing we want to make sure is that we have sufficient oversight on, and we do, elected officials still need to approve the budget every year on this, so, uh, we'll make sure that we keep it tight. Look at this, you know, the, the levy right now would be about three cents is the levy rate, so it's not a huge factor on somebody's property bill. It does frankly, uh, since Polk County does, is a member of Polk County Emergency Management, and we are as a city, there is, you know, the argument that our city, that our residents in Urberville are being doubly taxed because we're, we're contributing, uh, as well, and then they also pay the Polk County contrib, the contribution as well. So I think overall, it's, it's a little bit more equitable for everybody just to have this levy. So I think in, in, in balance, I would, my intent is to vote yes, but I want to make sure you're aware of it, and if you have any concerns or questions, let me know before tomorrow, two o'clock tomorrow, so.
I guess my only question is, like, what is Dallas County doing? Are they, I mean, are the communities that overlap, are we, do we defer to, uh, Polk County to provide our services?
Yeah.
Are we, am I being double taxed in Dallas County?
That's.
An Urberville resident and a county county to, to Dallas County, I mean.
Well, you wouldn't pay, yeah, you wouldn't pay Polk County as a Dallas County resident, you wouldn't pay the, you wouldn't pay the 3.7 cents.
Actually, it'd be a benefit for, we, we do all our emergency management through Polk County anyway, essentially.
The lion's share, and that's, you know, keep in mind that that's based on my experiences. I've been here. There could be things going on on the Dallas County side that I'm not aware of.
An educational opportunity would be.
No, I, I, I agree in, in terms of what responsibilities they have and the, and the roles that they have. The, the one thing that I did mention, A.J., I mean, there are some, you know, there are some reasons to have pause about another group of people coming in and having tax rate-setting authority in the climate that we're in, in, you know, generally in Iowa. But I, you know, they do good work, and I think at the end of the day, um, one thing I did encourage A.J. Mum, who's, who's the executive director in the, on the Polk County side, is, you know, encourage him to have conversations about a more regional effort in this. I mean, a lot of the conversations that we've had around PSAPS and around, you know, other types of emergency response really center around trying to get more bang for the buck and trying to regionalize and try to reduce cost overall. But this is a statutory provision that they have to do this. They're allowed to do it, and then our 17,000, well, almost $17,000 contribution through the 28E would go away. But then, you know, the elected officials would vote in a separate levy each year, so. I think, I think there should be conversations about regionalizing. Whether it happens or not is a, is a separate set of policy decisions, but I do think there should, we should be encouraging groups to work together to find ways to get more efficient and to make sure that there's service-level integration and consistency across our community in the emergency management area. Polk County is very robust. I'm very familiar with it. I'm way less, I'm way less familiar with what's going on on the Dallas County side, so I don't want to say that there's nothing going on.
The little I know is that at least at one point, the guy's name was A.J.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was very.
Yes, yes. But I think they actually, Dallas County did, Dallas County Emergency Management did help during the water disruption by delivering water to Fire Station, uh, 42 or 43, or 43, I think it was. So we, and we, when there's a specific Dallas County side, I know we've, we've called on Dallas County Emergency Management to help on that, so. All right, uh, that's all I have, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight, and.